And if we could.
I'm gonna try to get it real quick.
Okay, alright, so we'll just, we'll rewind it. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to another meeting of the Inkster City Council Orientation. It's six oh five P M. This is our meeting before the general meeting. If council has any questions as it relates to the agenda items, we'd like for you to ask those questions at this time as we have staff here to answer those questions. So I know Mr. Bivens was trying to get back in. You said, Congressman Chisholm?
Yes, I just, I shot him the, the link again for the meeting.
Okay, alright, so you said he may have wanted to say something on item A, so.
Probably.
Again. Okay, yeah, because both of, both of these are his items, so. Let's see here.
I guess why he's connecting yet, because it hadn't, doesn't say he's in the waiting room yet. Item B, that, oh, he's in there.
I'm here. Okay, Mr. Bivens.
Yeah, sir.
Did you have something on item A?
Uh, item A was, okay, tell me what that is, Mr. Mayor.
Consider an approval of authorizing the DPS director to update contacts and signatures to the city of Inkster water emergency operation plan?
Yeah, that's just to update our emergency water plan, that's to remove the former mayor off and the former treasurer off. And my new, I have new staff people, so that's just the update for you to sign it. And for you to sign it so we can send it to E, so we can be in compliance with the.
Alright, makes sense. Okay, and then item B, as it relates to consider and approve accepting the intergovernment award grant from Wayne County in the amount not to exceed five thousand two hundred sixty-three dollars to repair doors at the Book of Dozier.
Ah, that's the grant that me and you worked on, Mr. Mayor, with the Wayne County Parks and the Public Works Director. That's the annual monies we get from Commissioner Glenn Anderson. So we just need the council to adopt the resolution tonight and authorize you to sign that so we can get it to them, so we can get that fund that replace those doors that me and you identified in the back area by the pool.
Yep. Does that answer your question, Congressman Williams?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to know, because I know, I know they normally, under that grant, under the Recreation Fund, we always used to give community grant refunds back each year. And, and I noticed that this was, this was me and it has nothing to do with the eight hundred thousand?
No, this is additional money that the Wayne County Commission had at their disposal when Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson made us aware of it. And we talked to Alicia Bradford, who's the actual director for Parks and Rec for the, for Wayne County. And this money was sitting there, so Mr. Bivens and I, we assessed what was needed above and, and beyond what we had. And doors are very important, like right now at this time. So, once you guys accept this resolution, we do have quotes to be able to, you know, get these doors done with this grant monies.
And the doors in the front?
That are at the back by the pool area.
Oh.
Um, they're, they're, they're not only a hazard, but right now it's just a security issue as well. So we have them pretty much like blocked up, like we have them blocked up and like bolted up. And you really should have, you know, of course easements as it relates to, you know, panic doors and things of that nature over at the building. So since that part of the building had been used so long, they pretty much just kind of had them, you know, where they weren't accessible. So we want to make sure that we're, that they're accessible and we're compliant.
Okay, so the, the money that we got, eight hundred, I think eight hundred thousand, I mean, eight, uh, to, to put into the Recreation Complex, when are we going to get a layout of that?
Yeah, that's already been done. So point of clarification, we didn't necessarily get monies from Wayne County. Wayne County has agreed to handle that entire project, start to finish. Um, and they would, you know, basically, you know, administer the dollars directly to the contractors. So we had to go through and do what are called specifications. Um, and specify, you know, everything that we wanted to have at the complex relates to the details of it based off of what we did in two thousand. I believe it was like two thousand and ten when we first initially started this whole situ, the whole ball movement with that. So we just basically took what we had, updated everything with the county because of time constraints. And, um, you know, we're gonna have, matter of fact, it'll be a walkthrough tomorrow at seven, at, at, on the seventh, June the seventh at twelve P M. At the rec complex for the contractors, but everything is being handled by the county. So we don't have to come out of any money from our coffers, because, you know, frankly, we just didn't have the money to be able to take it and then reimburse it.
Okay, so my question is, my question is, Mr. Mayor, are they gonna tell us what they're gonna do for that amount of money?
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, they have to, by law. So we, we, we have, once everything is, like right now, everything is going out for a request for proposal. So it has to be up in the system for like thirty days. And once that comes down, then they'll pick who they're gonna pick. And then we'll say, okay, this is the layout, this is the design, this is what we're looking to have redone. Because really, it's just renovations. So we won't necessarily have a new layout. It'll just be updating the facility in those areas like the lobby, locker rooms, and then, um, the meeting rooms.
Thank you.
Alright, but that's totally separate from this, so that, that way we're on the same page. Alright, any questions on item C? Alright, hearing none. Is Attorney Jones on the line?
He just came in.
Attorney Jones, you have anything for closed session for us?
Okay, good, good evening. No, I don't have any closed session updates this evening.
Alright. Alright, anything from this body? If not, we're going to recess until seven P M.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Constable Wiley.
Yes, um, in reference to not having any closed session items, there are a couple of questions I have about the bill. And I wondered if that's something that we need to go in closed session about, or can I just ask him, or what?
David? Attorney Jones?
Okay, if, if they're regarding open matters, they probably should be, open legal matters, it should be in closed session.
Okay.
If, but I don't know what your question is, if it will, if it will touch on any strategy as it relates to any open legal matters, that's really, because you know what the question is, I, I'll leave that in your discretion. If, if, if it's not regarding open matters and discussing strategy, anything like that, it could be open, open session.
Okay, I was just inquiring about a charge. And all it said as a reason for the charge was other.
Okay, can, can you be a little more specific? It, it was for last month's bill?
Yes, it was a hundred and eighty-seven dollars. I don't remember the date right now, but I can find it, and it just said other.
Okay, I, I have no idea what that was, but I'll look into it if you give me the date.
Okay.
I can't, or. I can look into it, I can pull the email up.
It had no matter, it just said other. Okay, I understand what you're saying now, okay. What it was other, under, what case or something of that nature, okay.
Okay. And then also too, Constable, feel free to email the question to the attorney as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Right.
Go ahead, Constable Shaw.
Yeah, I was, I couldn't unmute myself. I did have a question on the discussion item concerning the five thousand dollars. Now, is this something additional that Glenn Anderson is going to, to give, or is this the one that he does annually?
This is in addition to.
Okay, so, so the one that he does annually has not come through yet, right?
No.
Okay.
Not for this year.
Okay, alright, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Any other questions, comments at this time?
Yes, also, I meant to call you on this with item C. Is this, uh, is this an old consideration?
Yes, yes. Now, this is, this is a no consideration. Like I told you guys, you know, you know, really, you know, and I'm assuming it's just a general consensus, and then, and David helped me with this as it relates to, um, you know, should this be added to the master fee schedule? Because none of these prices are in the master fee schedule currently as it relates to property sales. So is this something that should be added to the master fee schedule and then adopted by the city council? Attorney Jones?
Listen, my mute is very delayed. I, I, I can hear you. Are you referring to item?
Item C.
Item C.
Right, because basically, right, you know, like, we have, and, and understand this, counsel, what we're doing is, we're checking all of the boxes before we bring items to you. So you would have saw if we had, because like right now, we have about twenty more matters just from last year that we're trying to get through still, but we wanted to go back, so we didn't have any hiccups. So any taxes, just do any water or coal violations, anything like that. We want to make sure that we're going through every department, giving the departments a chance to answer back, and then making sure that we do our due diligence, double check, and then put them on the agenda. So this was the only one that made it to tonight, but we do have, you know, others that'll be coming. So we get, um, you know, it was a general consensus of this body last time around that if we had all twenty of them done, put all twenty of them on the agenda, believe me, if we had them all, we'd have been putting them on the agenda for you. So tonight is just this one, and this is a old consideration, two hundred and fifty dollars per parcel. So five hundred dollars for a buildable lot, so that'll be two of these put together, so you have four of them. So that's why you're getting the number that you have here.
And then also with that, with that checklist, that checklist wasn't, wasn't in the packet. I don't know if you went over that, uh, when you talked about the checking off of the various items.
Yeah, so hold on one second, let's make sure we speak to that. Okay then, so I'll have, uh, I'll follow up with Tracy and, uh, with Stephanie, because both of them, I know that they've been working really hard on this stuff to make sure that we have it all in the packet. And I apologize, I didn't have a chance to actually look at the packet before we got started tonight. I'll make sure that we got that for you before the start of the meeting. What else you got, Shaw?
Oh, I'm good, I'm good now.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, hearing none, we'll go, um, we'll, we'll stop right here, and we'll be back at seven P M. Alright, good evening, everyone, and welcome to another meeting of the Inkster City Council. Today is July the sixth, twenty twenty-one, and the time is seven oh one P M. As I call this meeting to order, we will stand impugn lead into the flag, and after that, we will have a prayer brought to us by Pastor Gene Overman. Troy?
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as one.
Pastor Overman?
Good evening, Mayor and Council Administrators, and my fellow Inkster residents. It is truly my honor to pray tonight. I just want us all to bow our heads. Father, we thank you tonight for the sense of community that you've given each and every one of us. We understand being a part of community makes us special. We thank you that we get the opportunity to serve one another in love, to be an example of who we really are and the power of what you've given us as we live each and every day. I thank you that the word of God is alive inside of us, that we will be as an example of what Philippians two, three, and four says, that we won't do anything out of selfish ambition or vain conceit. But Lord God will move in humility, valuing others above ourselves, not looking to our own interests, but each one of us will look for the interests of one another. We will start to look for the sincere interest of the city of Inkster, and we will work as one voice to get it done. I thank you for that, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen, thank you, Pastor Overman. Roll call, please, City Clerk?
Yes. Councilmember Williams?
Yep.
Councilmember Washington?
President?
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes, uh, I'm present, appearing remotely from my home in the, uh, city of Inkster, Michigan, County of Wayne.
Thank you. Councilmember Chisholm?
President reporting virtually from my home in Inkster, Michigan, County of Wayne.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Here in the city of Inkster.
Mayor Protim Howard?
Here, virtually from my home in the city of Inkster.
And Mayor Wimberly?
Here reporting from Inkster City Hall. We do have a quorum.
We do.
Moving right along, perfect, thank you very much. Approval of the agenda?
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Alright, discussion, I did send over the checklist that you guys, as it relates to the property, on your, should be in your email.
Yeah, I got it.
Hopefully, everybody received that. Any other discussion?
I think I have a question on that, man.
Uh, that, that'll come with the actual, that'll come, not, this is not, this is for the agenda.
Okay.
Alright. Roll call, City Clerk?
Yes, Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Howard?
Yes.
And Mayor Wimberly?
I don't have a vote, so the only time I get a vote is if it's three, three, and so we're all on the same page.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, perfect, no, thank you. Motion, uh, Constable Williams, you, you say Constable Williams? Did you get Constable Williams?
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
Alright, motion carry, moving right along, presentation, discussion. Enterprise Fleet Management Presentation, Mr. Bivens?
Yes, sir, good evening, Mayor, Council, to the viewing public. Thank you this evening. This evening, we have a presentation coming before this body for Enterprise Fleet Service to take over our fleet for the city of Inkster and manage. As we transition into a new era where we will begin to get better, newer cars for the whole fleet. Everybody will be updated, and, and, uh, Enterprise will be, uh, managing those cars from purchasing, leasing, all the way to the maintenance of those cars. And without a further ado, I will turn it over to Eric Dana, who's the representative for Enterprise, if he will give you the presentation. Uh, is he here? Do you see him, Mr. Mayor? Okay, uh, Mr. Dana, you have the floor now.
Thank you, Mr. Bivens, uh, and I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak to the council. Um, a little bit about Enterprise Fleet Management, we are a division of Enterprise Rent-A-Car. So Enterprise as a company, um, we own and operate a fleet of about one point five million vehicles. So everybody knows the rental car operations, but we work with probably about forty-five different municipalities in the state of Michigan. Um, probably the ones that you would know the most are the city of Detroit. And we also work with, um, Great Lakes Water Authority, and that's actually how I got connected to Mr. Bivens. So really, the goal that we have put together is the city has, um, you know, between the police vehicles and the DPS vehicles, the city's fleet has aged a little bit. So the program that we are, uh, we have introduced, um, we are going to be showing you a way that the city can get into new vehicles, um, with less maintenance and repair, that are safer to drive. And, uh, we're gonna show you, uh, how to get out of them, uh, at the proper time. And the end result is, it's gonna save the taxpayers a lot of money. So I'm gonna share my screen with you. Um, but, you know, I always look at this as, this is a discussion. And, um, I am, you know, I'm here to work, uh, you know, alongside Mr. Bivens. Uh, we have probably had at least a hundred twenty different phone calls, uh, over the last few months. And, uh, you know, we're very excited to be, uh, in front of you tonight, so, um, any questions before I get started? Okay. So the main, the main thing I want to stress in getting this started is, uh, the city leadership, and that's the mayor, that's the treasurer, that's, uh, the police force, uh, that's the DPS, and that's also Plant Moran. Um, they're in agreement that this process and this plan from Enterprise, uh, not only has a very, very positive budgetary impact, but it's also gonna lead to operational efficiency as well. Um, so here's just some quick, uh, highlights that, uh, you know, I want to impress upon you. More than seventy percent of the city's fleet is over ten years old. Um, the city right now looks like they cycle out of a vehicle after about fifteen years. So the, one of the things that we have found, uh, working in this segment is vehicles that are held that long. They typically, uh, have very, very high maintenance and repair costs. But they also lose their resale value. So what we're trying to do, and what we're gonna be able to do with you, is we're gonna be able to help you maximize resale value and save on maintenance and repair expense. And also, uh, vehicles that are that old, a lot of them have a lot of downtime as well. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, so this is, um, this is the other thing that I want to impress upon you. This is regarding the city's entire fleet, not any one department. So this is everything from administrative vehicles to police vehicles to DPS vehicles. Um, we, we really feel like we can help in every single department, um, moving forward. So again, you know, kind of the big four benefits that we always push, um, let's, we're gonna have a reduction in operating costs with our program. We're gonna have better resale value for the vehicles moving forward. Uh, we're gonna have a manageable budget process for fleet-related matters. And this is really where, uh, in working and consulting with the city, we know that there's been, uh, overruns. Because, you know, trying to predict the cost of maintenance or repair on an aged fleet, it's really tough. Um, I don't have a crystal ball, and I don't believe anybody else in the city does either. So it kind of leaves a little bit of a guessing game, right? So what we're gonna try to do is, we're gonna try to eliminate most of that guesswork, uh, moving forward. And, you know, we're gonna be putting the city in a spot where, you know, they can have much more budgetary stability moving forward. And then lastly, you know, I, I, I think at the end of the day, um, I have a master's in public administration. Um, this is like something that I'm really, really passionate about, but, you know, I think we all, you know, wanna serve the citizens better, and I'm, I'm just thinking about that, uh, the prayer that kicked off this meeting, and, um, you, you know, better serve citizens or happier citizens, they're, um, you know, it, it's a win-win for everyone, right? So usually, the next question that comes to me after, you know, we explain the process and what we can do is, hey, Eric, that's great, but how are we gonna pay for these new vehicles? And what we have at Enterprise Fleet Management, um, we have what's called an open-ended, uh, finance or an equity lease. So the, here's the nice part about this, uh, we honor the mid-year price, the governmental price of all vehicles. And Enterprise has actually won the fleet management contract for Sourcewell. So you get that great government buy, but instead of paying full cash price for the vehicle itself, you're able to actually, uh, finance it down in monthly installments. Uh, so it allows the city to replace many, many vehicles at once. So something like, um, if we looked at what the mid-year price of a pickup truck would be, it'd be around like anywhere from twenty-eight to thirty-two thousand dollars, depending on options, things like that. Well, thirty-two thousand dollars worth of lease payments can, you know, cover about thirteen or fourteen vehicles for one year. But in, you know, while we're doing that, guess what? We're also resetting the maintenance and repair expense for thirteen or fourteen vehicles moving forward. Um, and the other thing right now, what we're seeing in the market too, I'm sure we've all heard of this microchip shortage, right? Well, the, there is some good news that's coming from that. Uh, the resale market has never been more robust than it is right now for, uh, vehicles. So the city is gonna have a lot of, uh, flexibility and options moving forward. So the other things that I want to really impress upon you with regards to our finance mechanism, there's no early termination penalties. We will work with the city annually to help determine a budget replacement plan. So if there's a chance that, hey, it makes sense to even, uh, rotate a vehicle that you got from Enterprise twelve or twenty-four months into the lease, we can do that without any penalty to the city. The other thing that we can do, there's no over-mileage penalties. So, um, a lot of times you hear about a lease, and you think dealership-style lease, well, our finance mechanism isn't like that. And then lastly, there's no wear and tear penalties. We know that some of these vehicles might be used for snow plowing, uh, they might be used for wastewater services, they might be used in, uh, streets, things like that. Guess what? The majority of our clientele are either municipal industries or construction companies. So we know that they're a little bit rough on their vehicles. Any questions on that part? Okay, you guys are amazing. Um, so really, what, in working with the city and working with Mr. Bivens, what we kind of found, uh, and also Ms. Joyce, we kind of found that on and off, the city averages about a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars to operate their fleet annually. Um, by working with us, we're projecting, uh, the, the fleet cost to be around a hundred fifty thousand. So we're gonna be able to save the city thirty-five thousand dollars, you know, right out the gate. Uh, the other thing that we're gonna be doing too is, we're gonna be able to, uh, dispose of some vehicles that just really don't have much functional life anymore. Um, the city doesn't need to pay insurance on them anymore, things like that. You know, we're gonna be able to really, um, start putting this plan together. And the, the best thing that we offer too, uh, with regards to this program, is we have local account management out of our office in Farmington Hills, Michigan. So we're not gonna be just like a dealership where you get your vehicles from us and you don't hear from us. Like, the goal is to really collaborate, uh, and have an integrative partnership with the city moving forward. And as things change, as, you know, the financial picture, uh, gets better and better for the city, you know, we want to continue to work with, uh, you know, the leadership of the city, uh, and really being able to provide maximum value. So the other things that, uh, you know, me and Mr. Bivens, uh, you know, we kind of both agreed upon after looking at, uh, some of the numbers, we're looking at a fifteen percent overall reduction in maintenance and repair costs, uh, eight percent better fuel economy. Newer vehicles just get more fuel efficient, uh, right? And we're also looking at a, at a very conservative thirty percent overall reduction in vehicle downtime. And then here's kind of the plan to get started. We're gonna have two fully marked police units, and I was, uh, fortunate enough to have, uh, a few consultations with Assistant Chief Ratliff. Um, we're gonna start with a couple undercover police vehicles. There's gonna be some administrative vehicles, and there's also gonna be a few vehicles for Mr. Bivens's department. Um, so I will open up the floor to any questions.
Eric, you mentioned as it relates to, um, just the overall cost savings from one eighty on the maintenance side to one fifty. Um, is that something that you see like recurring, or?
Yes, because, yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, the, the biggest reason is, if the city- If the city is cycling out of its vehicles after, let's say, three to four years, uh, with its. Lower mileage pattern, um, I have some clients in the for-profit industry that maybe go fifty to sixty thousand miles per year in their vehicles. I think we all know even the police department, they're not, they're not getting anywhere near those. So the nice part about that is um. For any non-pursuit unit, we can, as we discussed, we can fix the cost of maintenance and repair into a monthly budgeted number. You know, and that's where, you know, the other thing too is it'll, it eliminates that guesswork. But the other thing that the city won't be dealing with is obviously warranties are based on time and miles. Well, if you're holding your vehicles for, you know, fourteen, fifteen years, a manufacturer's warranty just expires usually after five. Um, so this way, everything, the goal really is, you know, in a few years, everything that the city is driving. Is completely covered under warranty. So even if um. Something unforeseen happens where it's like an engine or a transmission went out. Hey, that's still covered by manufacturer warranty and it doesn't cost the taxpayers anything and the taxpayers are better served because. The vehicles aren't in a shop, you know, they're able to go and uh, get to where the work needs to be done.
The city is currently self-insured on its vehicles. Um, how do you foresee that happening as it relates to us going over to working with you on the fleet management?
Yeah, so great question. Um, I was under the assumption that the city was actually uh, in the Michigan uh, motor pool or the Michigan Municipal League. Um, or the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, I thought it was one of those. But basically your auto insurance, uh, even if it's self-insured. Uh, we can accommodate uh, your insurance where it still will cover the vehicle. Uh, and if you have liability through any sort of pool, um. You know, mechanism uh, like a municipal pool, you know, it'll transfer right over to any vehicle that you lease from Enterprise.
Any questions from the body?
Um, yes, I have a question. Um, in terms of the insurance, um, will the insurance premiums be. Increasing because now we have a newer fleet of vehicles?
Uh, Mr. Green too, when I say the body, so you have to recognize yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Yep, this is Darryl Green, Treasurer, City of Inglewood. Sorry about that.
No, no worries. Go ahead.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Green. Uh, typically newer vehicles have more safety features on them. Uh, they're also generally considered safer than a fourteen-year-old vehicle. So um, you know. Typically what we have told us, uh, what municipalities have told us rather is. You know, if their insurance costs didn't go down, they didn't go up like they kind of flatlined because again. A lot of the safety features that are on newer vehicles, uh, just it means uh. It means more safety for uh, city employees, um, you know, things like that.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I understand that. Um, but I, I think that we would probably um, feel comfortable. About seeing those numbers and how those increases in insurance coverage will affect the bottom line. That's the first question. And then the other question is, uh, the thirty percent and the other projections that you guys came up with. Is there any way for you guys to show us a breakdown of how you came up with those numbers?
Uh, I can provide that. I know Mr. Bivens has uh, that as well. Um.
Okay, good. Yep. Make sure that you provide that to the body for us, Eric. Thank you. Any other questions from the body?
Oh, yes, Mayor. I'm sorry. Okay, uh, it says two fully marked police units. So that's coming to us. They've already done all of the things we usually do after. We buy the car. So they're coming to us already with the markings and the oh, uh, the light bars and all that stuff like that, right? Or no?
Uh, yes, uh, I have worked with Lieutenant Twardzik. Um, so you know, I've also talked to the uh. The location that actually does the city's outfit. So uh, in, in consulting with Assistant Chief Ratliff, Lieutenant Twardzik. Um, yeah, the, we are, we're going to have those vehicles, um. You know, everything that goes on a new fully marked unit currently, it'll be that way through us, ma'am.
Okay, these six administrative vehicles you have, are these for take-home uh, use or?
Uh, they can be. I, we don't typically man, we don't ever mandate how vehicles can be used or, you know. It, it's up to the end user.
All right, well, then the end user needs to tell us how those six administrative vehicles are being used. That's all I have, Mayor.
To that question, to the body, Mr. Mayor, to that question from Councilwoman Wiley. These vehicles, those administration vehicles will go across the board. They're going to my department. They're going to the fire department, they're going to administration and to the police department. So uh, yes, those will be take-home vehicles, but they're uh, going to. They're going to like my staff, uh, like I said, the fire department, police and administration.
So Mr. Bivens, I'm going to, to Councilwoman's, Councilwoman Wiley's point then. Um, if this is something that, you know, we take action on and is approved, we definitely want to have a breakdown on where the vehicles are going.
Yes, sir. I will do that for sure. Because I, I have that broken down already. Yes, if they take action to prove, I will provide everybody that information.
All right, Councilwoman Wiley, did you have anything else?
Well, just the, you know, seven, he's getting some administrative vehicles, then he's getting DPS vehicles. Are these DPS vehicles like the trucks they're using now? Is that what that is?
Yes, ma'am. They'll be have two fifties equipped with snowplows.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Uh, in order, Councilman Chisholm.
You're on mute, sir. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I saw it says we're disposing of twenty-six vehicles. I know they said some of those vehicles were just old and just need to be taken out of the fleet. And we're only bringing in seventeen. Is, is, is there a reason there's not an equal swap or are some of those vehicles that are being taken out just no longer in use and we'll just be disposing of them in total?
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Bivens. Uh, yes, sir, Councilman. Um, in kind of working uh, alongside Lieutenant Twardzik and Mr. Bivens. Uh, it was determined that the city just uh, actually was slightly over-fleeted. And um, you know, some of the vehicles that have been being held were actually because. If one of the other vehicles goes down, there were so many spares, um, just to try to, you know, um. Be able to account for like, hey, if we have three vehicles in the shop, we can still use this one. So. Obviously, the hope now is, okay, we've got a plan for the fleet moving forward. Um, we don't need nearly as many spares as we had previously.
All righty, thank you. And then this particular uh, proposal that we're talking about, is this a one-year or is this a multi-year proposal?
So it's a multi-year proposal, but the amazing thing about what we offer is. The, a- and I believe Mr. Bivens, um, the city attorney has already reviewed the contract, uh, the lease agreement. But there's, i- if you don't feel like you're getting value uh, from Enterprise. There's no termination fee for the city to, you know, cancel using Enterprise. Like, we have to continually prove our worth and our value to the city. Um, and that's really where, you know, we're going to be out in front of you as much as possible because we want you to see just what we're doing for. For your city, but also other municipalities and, you know, kind of the best practices that we're seeing in the industry.
Cool. And I did hear one of my colleagues uh, asked about the auto insurance portion. And I heard you were saying that the coverage basically has to be maintained by the city. You wouldn't be covering it, you'd solely be supplying the vehicle. Does that go the same for uh, civilian medical coverage or employee medical coverage who's driving the vehicle as well?
Uh, correct, that would be uh, under the city's umbrella policy, uh, like for liability.
Got you. All righty, and I think that's all I have for now.
All right, in order, Councilman Williams.
Um, I, I was, I was wondering, I know they took the twenty-six old units out of the fleet. Um, the first year, but I'm wondering how many of them are police cars they're taking out?
Eric, do you have that number?
Uh, I, I do. Please bear with me while I'm looking. I'm going to pull the Excel file up, so. Uh, sir, are you saying how many police vehicles are being, um?
Taking out the old units. I've been twenty-six.
So out of the twenty-six, um. Give me two seconds, I'm, I, I'm pulling that up, so just bear with me. I'm, I'm working behind the scenes here. It appears as though nineteen of those twenty-six will be police vehicles.
And we only replacing them with four?
Uh, no, sir. Uh. Yeah, so sixteen, I'm sorry, sixteen vehicles uh, will be going to the police department. And then there will be. Two marked units, two undercover units, so that's four. Uh, there are two out of the, uh, I'm sorry, three out of the administrative vehicles will be. Uh, designated for the police department, so I think uh, that's six right there.
So you said a lot of numbers, Eric. Let's make sure we're on the same page. How many are going to the police department?
Seven.
Out of the twenty-six, seven?
Out of the seventeen new vehicles that'll be coming in?
Oh, gotcha. I, okay, so it was two questions. So the twenty-six, how many of them are police cars?
Uh, sixteen of those, sixteen of the twenty-six that are being disposed of are police vehicles.
Okay, so that's the first question. So it's sixteen old, old vehicles from the police department. And then we're getting seventeen new vehicles in with the entire fleet. How many of those are police?
Uh, seven.
Councilman, does that answer your question?
I was trying to figure, they get down here, okay, so these seven, okay, they're not, they're not road police cars then? Administrators are going to be driving a lot of these or what? Have you got it broke down here?
Do have some road patrol in there though. What are road patrols? What do you have for road patrol?
We have two fully marked police units. We also have two undercover police vehicles.
Yeah, so out of the seven, it's four.
Okay, but we destroying seven, sixteen, you said?
Sixteen, yeah, and you know how our fleet looks. So those are really old, those are the ones that's closer to the ten, fifteen-year mark. Those are really old vehicles.
Okay, but I'm just, I'm just wondering, how many would that leave the police department with, if, if we do that?
Well, number one, I think what Eric said and talking with Lieutenant Twardzik and A.C. Raloff is that the, the department as a whole with Mr. Bivens. Was over-fleated, so. Let's make sure we understand that. So we're getting into where we're getting our numbers down. We don't have so many vehicles to try to take care of because of. Cost of maintenance and with Enterprise in this particular deal. If a car goes down, warranty, all that different type of stuff, then it'll be, you know, we'll, 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 we'll have Enterprise to. Back us up and give us another vehicle and, you know, keep the fleet going. So, go ahead, Eric.
Oh, I was going to say, I know three of the vehicles are actually uh, Humvee, like they're military grade. Um, a- and my understanding and dealing and uh, speaking with. A.C. Raloff and Lieutenant Twardzik is they don't really serve a civilian purpose.
Right, those are the ones that we got from, we, we receive from, um, we receive from the military, we receive from the military to us.
The new building, the new vehicle that we brought, we'll still have them.
Yes, yes.
And Mr. Mayor, back is speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Bivens.
So to Council and the public, what you got to understand is this is like phase one of a multi-year. Adventure and uh, commitment with Enterprise. So what we're doing which makes our fleet more efficient is we're weeding out like Mr. Mayor said. Those old vehicles just, just got hundreds of two hundred thousand miles on it. And we're streamlining our fleet because we have a lot of waste. And what we're doing with this program is, as the years evolve. You will start to see a much better fleet in the city of Inglewood and the police and everybody else will get much. Their cars will flip quicker than normal. So instead of us having a police car with ninety, a hundred eighty, a, you know, ridiculous miles on it. They will be very low miles because we'll be turning them over quickly through this pro- program. But that's. When the mayor brought this to me a year ago, that's what intrigued me and like, Eric, Mr. Dane told you, we've been working on this for a year. And it's because I wanted to make sure it made sense for the city and it made sense for every department. Because I have to take care of every department and show you guys the savings and then how we can better. Uh, have better fleet maintenance and better cars on the road. Because you know, that's what our biggest concerns, we always talking about these old vehicles that's going up and down the road. Now we're eliminating. That's why you see us giving so many to Enterprise and getting less back because we're streamlining the fleet and making it better.
A- and i- if I could actually um. Harken to that point, uh, Mr. Bivens, you know, I know one of the biggest things that we kind of discovered uh, in working with Lieutenant Twardzik was. The city has been holding police vehicles for so long that when they need a new fully marked unit. A lot of times the outfit that uh, somebody else had, had asked me about. It, it costs actually more than the vehicle itself. So we actually work with Livingston County and one of the things that um, Livingston County, you know, I've worked with their motor pool for a long time. But one of the things that they actually run the same type of police vehicles, but what they showed me was, and I actually consulted with them. For the city of Inglewood, um, instead of an outfit for, for a new police vehicle costing thirty-two thousand after ten years. Well, if you're going to replace a police vehicle after four years, you can transfer the majority of that equipment over for anywhere from about twelve to fourteen thousand per unit. So if we really start, you know, calculating like how much more efficient it is to be able to get into a new vehicle, transfer the equipment over. Uh, because a lot of times the equipment's not even lasting where it's got to get replaced, you know, with that older type of vehicle, right? So again, that's where being able to, you know, start out with a big number. To kind of set the course for the rest of the fleet in years two and three and four, uh, that's ultimately what this is going to do.
All right, Councilman Williams, do you have anything else, sir?
Okay.
All right, Councilwoman Washington?
Actually don't have any more, uh, any question. Um, well, I had a question, but my colleague, um. Steve Chisholm actually asked a question for me, so he answered it for me. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Mayor Proton Howard.
Okay, so the, the three vehicles that was just approved in the budget, are we still going to continue to pay for those as well? And the ones that was approved last budget, what's going on, what's going to happen with those?
So those are, we are in agreement with those. So those are already, this is not part of this, we're just talking about the maintenance. Program that the city has, it's costing us about a hundred and eighty thousand.
Well, I mean, I understand what that we should say.
That is continued on, we had a, we have a contract with those, so there's a three-year contract with those.
Okay, so. If we implemented this program, when will, when will this program be, I'm sorry, when would this program be implemented to us? To take a vote?
Well, that's what we're talking about tonight as it relates to just presenting the information to you all. If there's anything you want us to come back with. Um, you know, or if you feel comfortable, we can put it on to the agenda tonight. It's totally up to this body.
Uh, my next question is, I like the figures, the breakdown. Because we're going to be entering into this program if this body chooses to. But I would like to know how much is this going to cost us for the cars that we have already got? That we in, agree, that we in agreement with, that was approved by the budget. Um, also too, like, uh, Councilman Williams.
Yeah, when you turn your head, you go away, so turn.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, because I, our officers need fleet cars. They need fleet. Um, and I'm just kind of concerned as well, how many administration. Will be getting these cars versus the actual patrol cars. So, um, the new cars that are, that was approved by the budget, are those going to be road cars? Not administration, not supervised, road cars. Will they be road cars?
Yes, they are road cars. I think you got a chance to, I don't know, I, I know that.
No, I'm not talking about the ones that they just got out and, uh, in the fleet out. I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the one that was just passed in this budget in June, twenty twenty, twenty-one budget.
You got, you got me on that. We got, we can get, we can get more. You got, you got me on that, we got, we can get, we can get more cars this budget? But that was for last budget.
Well, apparently, well.
It's to pay for.
We're not, we're not even gonna discuss that because I don't have a budget book, so I didn't know what was really in there, but uh, the first.
Do have it online though.
Well, no, we need, I'm not even gonna go there, but anyway, I don't know what was in that budget, that's why I didn't pass it because we didn't have an actual budget in front of our face. But in the first talks that we had, the copies that we did have, they had vehicles. So I don't know what was in the budget, so I don't know. So that's why I'm asking, what's gonna happen to those cars that we, that the council disapproved without a budget book? Is it still in there or is it not?
Mr. Mayor, uh, to, to council and Mayor Proton, what you approve for FY twenty-two is those three vehicles you just bought, you gotta continue to pay them, so that amount was in there. And there was an amount in there for them to get two new patrol cars, which, talking with Eric and the chief, A.C. Raloff and Torres, they're working on something to take care of that too. To try to pull that into this years, am I correct, Eric trying to pull that into this deal that we're getting ready to go into with Enterprise?
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, so that's what you approved, you approved to pay for the three, the two, the right goes, because you gotta keep paying the lease payment, so the two, the right goes, and the one charge, and then they got two new police cars coming outfit for patrol at FY twenty-two. But Eric and the chief and Torres, them are working on something so they can roll that into our program, so they'll have four cars in there. So that, they're, they're working on, they're still working on, trying to work that out now. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, well, like I said, without a budget book, I was not for sure how much money we were paying for that. So, uh, that's what I was, that's what I was speaking of. Um, and, and, and also too, Eric, thank you for this presentation. Now, when you say residual, that's the money, I mean, how long are we, how, how long are we gonna keep these units?
Uh, the plan is we're writing vehicles over a sixty-month lease, but if the resale market is as robust as it is today, and just as a quick aside, somebody who works in this industry for more than a decade now, the resale market because of the microchip shortage is about sixty percent higher than it was a year ago. So if we're still seeing, and obviously the lead times for manufacturers are longer, but what we're going to do is we are going to actually analyze where the market is with regards to the city's owned vehicles, like the ones that you currently own today. And then the vehicles that you're getting from Enterprise, we're also gonna let you know where you stand on those as well. Uh, because the city gets that great mid-tier pricing, you know, the government buy, you're always gonna be in a spot where when you lease a vehicle from Enterprise, even the moment of new vehicle drives off a lot, you know how it becomes worth a lot less than it is?
Yes.
Um, but because you get that government buy, the city is actually insulated from a lot of that risk of depreciation, so we can advise you on that, but leases will be written for sixty months and we can get you out of them if it makes sense after twelve months.
Okay, so when you talk about residual, will the residual be raised because of the market that we are in right now?
No, so, but I, I think I know where you're going and forgive me for interrupting, I'm gonna try to, but I, I know exactly, I believe I know where you're going. So let's say you get a, the city gets a pickup truck from Enterprise for twenty-five thousand dollars, right?
Mm-hmm.
So over time, let's say at the end of sixty months, that vehicle would be worth, would be on our books, excuse me, for five thousand dollars. So you financed the twenty over five years. If we could sell that vehicle for twenty thousand dollars, because again, you're, you know, the type of vehicle it is, low miles, the city would keep that difference between the book value, the five thousand, and the resale value of twenty. So the city would actually net, you know, it would get fifteen thousand dollars back.
Okay, but you saying low mileage, but because our police units won't have low mileage on them for sixty months.
For the pursuit units, we are gonna do a full four-year finance to a zero-dollar value on those. But for someone like Jerome's vehicles or the administrative vehicles, we're gonna leave a residual value on those. Um, and those, um, you know, it's just a, just like an amortization schedule, like, you know, when you sign for your mortgage, you see, you know, hey, after thirty years, I've paid all this money and here's, we kind of have the same thing where it's like, hey, after year one, the vehicle will be on our books for a certain amount, after year two, it'll be on our books for a certain amount. And then the difference is, you know, what the resale value is versus the book value.
Okay, because the book value is right now is not going corresponding with what the vehicles are being sold for right now, so. Okay, so when you, let me, I'm, let me, I'm trying to figure how I'm asked this question. Okay, it's a wholesale deal, wholesale. Okay, you get the units from the, from a GM, whatever, you on wholesale, you paying one price. Where, where is it, where is it, how are you making money off of this, is what I'm asking?
That's a great question, so in the monthly lease payment, there is a little management fee that we charge on any new vehicle that you acquire from Enterprise. So, um, we make a little bit of money on every vehicle that you would lease from us. And then when we go to sell the vehicle, we would sell it at a charge of four hundred dollars. So the state bid site charges anywhere from five to twelve percent of the vehicle sale price. We just charge four hundred dollars to handle the paperwork and transfer title and everything like that, but that is a way we make money as well.
Okay, okay, so, because I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at a retail deal in my head and I'm going from wholesale, what the dealer gives it for, and then once a customer gets the vehicle, it's a different price, it's a little higher priced than what the, what the wholesale dealer is.
You get the price of the vehicle at the state buy, so.
Okay, so, so it's a little less, the state buy uh, that's a little less, less than civilian?
Oh, man.
I mean, it's a little less than what I would buy.
Uh, man.
I would buy it at a higher, if I would.
Yeah, if, if you and I could get a vehicle at what the city could get a vehicle for, um, you and I would be.
Right, that's what I'm saying, okay.
Oh yeah, we would be jumping off the lot because we would, we just got the best deal.
Right, all right, and that's why I'm saying, I mean, if I had to buy this car, it would be, it would cost me more money, okay?
Yeah, 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 to, yeah, Mayor Proton and to the council and Mayor, we get them at inventory cost through my deal. So yeah, you would, you would pay a lot more than we do. They did, basically when the dealership deals with us, they break even.
Okay, so I just, I'm almost, I'm almost finished, I just got one more last, so I would like the figures on how much that we would pay with this. And I still not certain on the ones that, the two new vehicles that we just approved in this year's budget. So I, I need to see that first, to see the cost savings. I'm done, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilman Shaw?
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that's a valid point as, as well, I know they talked about trying to bring this into this particular deal, so to speak. Now, would that, would that change the price of the hundred and eighty-five or hundred and fifty thousand if we were to get those vehicles into this plan here?
So again, that a hundred eighty-five thousand, that's more of a maintenance and repair figure. That doesn't even calculate what the city spends to acquire vehicles. Um, so in essence, what we're saying is just the maintenance savings alone, and then also that there's a cash flow benefit because, you know, like we discussed about, if the city wanted to purchase seventeen vehicles upfront, the budgetary impact, it would be a large capital outlay, right? Um, I, I think we could all agree seventeen brand-new vehicles would, would necessitate a pretty large outlay of capital, right?
So would, would you say with the seventeen, I'm saying if we get the other vehicles that we just purchased into this particular plan, will that change the price that we have in front of us right now? Because it wouldn't be seventeen vehicles, it would be, let's say, two vehicles that's trying to get into this plan. Uh, Jerome, would, would it be nineteen vehicles or twenty vehicles? Or will this be different?
Uh, Councilman Shaw, I would let, if the chief, uh, A.C. is on, I would let them speak to how they plan on doing that, because they could better address that question to not care because they have been working with Eric closely with that dollar amount. So, one, I, I understand what you're saying. You wanna know whether they increase the number from seventeen to nineteen? And I think what, and that's why I say, I don't wanna speak out of turn because they have been working closely with Eric on this. So if the chief or A.C. is on here or Torres, one of them could address that for you.
Mr. Chair, is they, is they on here or, or they're not?
Yeah, Chief Riley, uh, A.C. Raloff is on here. And let's see here. I think it's on the Williams iPhone if we can get him muted. Yeah, I guess, just to jump, just to jump into that real quick though, as it relates to that, of course, the, the price is gonna go up, i- is just what it is. You know, for seventeen vehicles, you're talking about a hundred and fifty thousand. If you add two more additional vehicles, of course, that number's gonna fluctuate a little bit, how much we, we don't know, so. I guess that would be the question.
Yes, that's, that's the question I'm trying to.
So that would be, that would be something that we would come back with if we're looking to put that into this. And we know that this is two separate things, so the council approved um, the cars that we have now, which are the three cars that we have now that we're on a plan with, a three-year payment plan with. And then it's monies in the budget to get two additional cars for this year, we cut it from a hundred thousand to fifty thousand. Going back to that, I remember the conversation on that. So, um, we're looking at now, if we can include, instead of going out and purchasing and getting into say like Ford Motor Credit or something like that and get an additional vehicles for the two vehicles, then we would work with Eric and Enterprise to save that fifty thousand for new vehicle purchase, to put into this new plan that we're talking about.
So you're saying with, with the maintenance costs, with this maintenance costs, those are the vehicles that we just purchased, they're trying to get into this plan, correct?
No, no.
So they're not trying to get those vehicles?
That's two separate, that's two separate deals, we don't wanna complicate this thing. So you have the vehicles that we've already purchased, we're already in a deal with already. So we have a lease agreement on those particular vehicles already.
For maintenance and what have you, right?
You're talking about maintenance, no, that's not maintenance, this is purchase. We purchased those vehicles, so they're under warranty, so if anything happened with those vehicles, we'll just send them back and then they're covered with the warranty, so that's not in the, the, the maintenance cost that we're talking about. And the maintenance cost, and we'll get you that too, it's a breakdown for each department. So Department of Public Works spends so much money a year for maintenance. The police department spends so much money for, for maintenance. So those are the two main entities within the organization that the cars are, you know, pretty much, you know, Mr. Bivens, he works with, with me, of course, with my vehicle. So that's in, and then fire goes over and work with him as well, then police, you know, they take care of their own vehicles. So when you talk about the maintenance costs, that's the two numbers that we put together that we're spending in maintenance costs. We're eliminating maintenance costs because now we're looking at bringing in, getting rid of the old stuff, bringing new stuff that'll have warranties connected to it.
Also, the next question, while, while A.C. is trying to get on, the next question that I have here is, uh, is this the only company that we are looking at to do this? Or is, you talked about the industry standards, so is there another company that actually does something like this, or have we looked to another company for something like this?
No.
And Councilman, the reason why is Enterprise won.
No, I just said, I just said no, you asked a question, I said no.
No, there is not a company that does this?
You said that we looked for someone else and I said no.
Okay.
Uh, that clear for you, Councilman?
I'm not, Mr. Mayor.
Hold on one second, Councilman Williams, that clear for you, Councilman Shaw?
Yeah, yeah, that is, and then Eric was about to jump in as well to, to, to make his statement.
Okay, go ahead.
Many municipalities, because Enterprise has won the Sourcewell contract for government fleet management services, uh, Sourcewell is obviously a municipal uh, purchasing cooperative. Uh, a lot of times, I mean, every time it's ever come up, that satisfied any bid requirements that could exist.
Correct.
So, so who, who is your competitor? Who are you competing against?
So Eric, explain that to him what the, the, my bid is and Sourcewell is and how that actually works.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, Sourcewell is a, is a government purchasing cooperative that streamlines and combines thousands of municipalities and merges their buying power into one consortium, right? So they awarded a fleet management contract that we entered in and we won that contract based on overall value, pricing, things like that. Um, I don't, I apologize, I don't know the other companies that were involved in their bid. But typically as an industry standard, sir, uh, that Sourcewell contract is usually used in lieu of, you know, getting bids for, you know, three different bids or five, whatever the, the policy is that the city has. Um, because it's already been vetted out by, you know, I am a very, very large organization that many municipalities are a part of all across the country.
That satisfies your question, Councilman Shaw?
Yeah, I hear, I hear what, I hear what he's saying, I hear what he's saying. Now, now you may mention about the A.C. was coming on concerning how they was gonna bring this into, or merge this into this, this program here?
Yeah, and I know that, I know that he said he would be on the call and they, he's actually on duty right now too, so.
Okay.
But I saw his name on there, it's Williams iPhone, but he may be busy.
Do you know if they have a estimated timeframe that they were gonna get this in, or do they need this to be done first in order for them to get it in, or? Do you, do you know anything of?
No, this is the first time that I'm actually hearing about the two new vehicles looking to be put into this particular package.
Okay, okay.
I believe, I believe that they can work it out at any given time, if, if enterprises are, you know, our management, if they're managing our fleet, they can work it out at any given time.
Okay, that's all, that's all I have.
All right, Councilman Williams?
I, I, I think I have the same program, the same program I think in Enterprise, into with the Inxter Housing. I think they getting a lot of vehicles through the Inxter Housing, they proved that. I, I, I noticed it when it came in talking about, uh, dealing with the maintenance problem they was having. Uh, but what, I, 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 I understand what you're saying is because uh, we can always wipe out leases and improve them to higher models, but what I'm really concerned about, okay, and you have to really sell me upon, I'm looking at, I'm looking at what you, your, your breakdown, after you wipe these seventeen vehicles out, your breakdown, I mean, these seventeen vehicles that you're getting, and the twenty-six that you, 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 you're taking out of the fleet. I have a serious problem, okay, so maybe you can break that down to me, okay? You know, when it comes down to, to mark, mark police vehicles and then undercover police vehicle, but then you got six administrative vehicles, you know, maybe you can break that down to me, where all these six vehicles, administrative vehicles going, okay? And, and I can understand if these are trucks for VPS vehicles and stuff like that, with all the repairs and stuff that we have. But when it comes down to six administrative vehicles, maybe Jerome, someone can give me a breakdown of what, what them six vehicles are.
Miss, Mr. Mayor, you want me to address that question right now?
Yes.
Okay, one is going to the mayor, two is coming to my facility, one is going to the fire department, two is going to the police department.
Two of the administrative vehicles are going to the police department?
Yes, sir. And like I, like I explained to you guys, this, you gotta understand, don't look at where the vehicles are going or who they're going to, look at the plan. This is a plan procedure that we're moving forth with for the next couple of years. So the first year, this is what we mapped out, and next year, you'll see more patrol cars going on the road. And each year, the patrol will increase, that's what you gotta understand, so don't get bogged out of who getting what or where what is going, but look at the overall view and look at the plan that I present before you that I'm bringing before to this body and ask you to approve at the next meeting, or if you, if you're blessed and you wanna put it on this agenda. But look at the plan, and let's don't look at who's getting the vehicle, what, or what vehicles are going where. Because there's a reason and a purpose behind what we're doing to increase our. Because there's a reason and a purpose behind what we're doing to increase our fleet and make it better. And streamline it. And this is just the start of a building of a relationship, I hope, for a long-term enterprise. So we can update our fleet and be more current in our fleet. But we have to start, we have to have a starting point to get to the finish line, if you guys understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I understand very well what you're saying, but I don't understand when it comes down to, to spread new vehicles out. Um, wh- what you're talking about.
Well, what we'll do is that is, is because it'll be for your information, is that we'll give you a breakdown of where the vehicles are going and, you know.
He didn't, he didn't break down, Mr. Mayor, right here. I'm looking at it.
Yeah, but I'm talking about as it relates to, you know, who they're going to because.
Yeah, well, he just, he just told me that too. I, I, I heard every word he said.
Okay, well, well, I thought you seemed like you wanted something else. I'm sorry.
Uh, if you really want to know, you know, uh, with my mind, ways thinking that I can shoot a lot of them brand-new vehicles that we're talking about giving for replacement. Up into the police department, okay, up in that unit for more, you know, we need more patrolmen on the street.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, we definitely looking good on patrols. It's getting there. It takes time, so.
So, so that's why you asked me. I, I just feel that.
Yeah, so you're saying you would rather see, say, five patrol cars in this situation versus, you know, four?
No.
Or two?
Yeah, four, yeah, four, two, yeah. I mean, you can put the numbers to it all you want. All I'm saying is, I feel there should be more added to the police unit than there is in the administration.
But, but, uh, Councilman Williams, see your point. Remember what I just said. This is the first year. This is getting the kick, this is getting the program off the ground and getting it running. So this is the first year. Then the second, you will start to see those patrol cars go up. Because we'll start building that residual and we'll start taking out those older cars to start to put no new ones in. But I understand, this is the first year. That's what you gotta understand, understand it. That's why I said, don't look at what, what, where the cars are going. Look at the program overall, how does it benefit the city? That's what you have to look at. Look at the program.
That's one opinion. You know, that's one opinion. I, I feel like I look at also where these vehicles are going and how they gonna, gonna benefit the city.
Hey, uh, M- Mr. Councilman, um. Have you ever heard the phrase, uh, progress begins one step at a time?
All the time.
That's literally what we're trying to implement and roll out to the city is, um. I, I wish I could wave a magic wand and just, you know, give you all brand-new vehicles, um. But what we're doing is we're beginning the process of taking one step at a time. So that, that's the best way I can explain it. And, um, you know, I, I hope that made sense.
Now, I, 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 I do know what, what you're trying to do. You're trying to wipe the fleet, make it, make it a better fleet. I understand that, okay? Okay, but then too, I can abort my opinion about where I think these vehicles should be looked at, the ones that we do have, at, at, at the, uh, twenty-six old vehicles. And where they should go replaced, okay? Now that's my issue.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead.
I think, I think what George is trying to say is, um, if I can articulate it, I'm trying to articulate what he's saying. Uh, the administration just got some new vehicles. And I think that's what he's asking, why are, why, why, why do the administration have vehicles in this new? Plan that we trying to do, where they just got some? And what would happen to the new cars that they just got? I think that's what he was saying. I think he would rather see, uh. The cars go to road patrols versus administration because they did just get some new cars.
Uh, uh, to that question, Mayor Protem, and to the body, the cars that are being replaced are being sold at a higher retail value. Which brings in revenue to the city, which reduces our fleet costs in the first year. That's why you see those cars. That's why you see the administration cars in there. That's why you see, like, like Eric told you, the police are getting seven. I'm getting the bulk of everything. So I'm getting the bulk of the F two-fifties. The fire department is getting one vehicle and two going to the police. But if you look at when Eric positions you with the plan, if you look at the resale value of the vehicles that we're getting rid of. It makes sense because we're covering some of our costs, which means it's less coming out of our pocket. Like Eric said, with that money that we get coming in, we get more cars than we normally get in the past. Normally, I'm buying four cars or five cars a year. Now we getting seventeen. So that's where the savings and that's where the process begins this year. And moving forward, you will see it get better and better and better. It's just this year it worked out that, the way we're looking at it now, that's how it worked out. Like I said, I put a lot of time and effort into this, went back and forth with Plant Moran. Me and the mayor had discussions, I had discussions with the police department. And so we all came to an agreement with this presentation that you see tonight and Plant Moran. I wasn't bringing it before you guys to Plant Moran signing off on it. And they signed off on it because they said it makes sense for the first year and then it gets better as each year progresses. That's all I have to say.
All right, so it sounded like a couple of things that we need to do as it relates to the body and getting back information. I just heard back from Chief Ratliff. He's actually on a run right now. He's on the road as a patrol officer today. Um, so he'll be on when he can, you know, of course, get on. Uh, Chief, uh, Riley is on vacation until the end of this week. So, um, we'll get back to you with those questions that you have as it relates to the body. And then hopefully we can, um, put this on the agenda for next council meeting to, um, vote on.
And, and, and dear Mr. Chair, just real quickly, uh, I know you talked about, you know, the overall, the fleet. So we, do we have a particular line item that we're looking at to, to fund this? Or are we going to spread it throughout all of the departments and they have to pay for, for their vehicles?
So it's coming out of the, the maintenance, like we talked about before, the actual maintenance line item for each individual department.
Okay.
So it's the maintenance line item for each individual department.
Okay, so.
Looking at this.
So they, they'll be pitching, they'll be pitching in.
Yes.
So to speak, okay. So, and I still, you know, I still would, would like to see, you know, at least some bids on this. But he said a overall source provider already bid.
So, 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 so basically, you know, again, and Mr. Bivens, you know, I thank him for the work that he did on this. Because this is came from a resource that I had as, as it relates to a, a relationship in the city of Detroit and what they've been doing. So I asked Mr. Bivens to vet it all out. Understand this, that we, this is M bid. This is Michigan. This is my, am I bid. This is state of Michigan. In conjunction with all of the municipalities already. So Enterprise, they, you know, submitted their bid proposal for, you know, them to be the sole source provider for this particular. Um, you know, this, this particular model. So we, it's no other, we, if we went out and tried to find somebody else, you're not gonna get any better than what we have. Because this is the government. This is what we're talking about.
Okay, and that's.
What we'll do is we'll get that in writing and get you a breakdown for that, explaining that and what that is. So you have a, you understanding.
I just want to make sure that you can bring that out to the public so that we would know exactly what is being said. So that we won't be saying, okay, we didn't, we bought, we bought past the purchasing policy and we didn't go out for bids. So just to get an understanding, making sure that it's very clear to the public.
Yep.
Hey, Councilman Shaw, um, can you still see my screen, sir?
Yes, I got you. Yeah, I got the presentation right in front of me too, so.
Okay, so do you see these last three? Uh, and I'm gonna highlight them for you. So the, this Sourcewell, this, uh, Tips Taps Cooperative and this E N I. Uh, those are all three, uh, nationwide municipal, uh, purchasing cooperatives. That have all signed off that actually awarded Enterprise their fleet management contract. So a- again, uh, it's not even just one, it's actually three that we can point to. Um, E N I is typically used in educational. Uh, Tips Taps is, uh, more of a, uh, it's more of like a federal, um, you know, for, um. Different sort of, you know, materials, things like that. And then Sourcewell, I, I mean, you can buy anything from copy papers to vehicles under that agreement on. So that, that's really where I, I, I hope you can see, um, this isn't a fly-by-night operation. You know, we've been, we, we.
Okay, all right.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, uh, to the body, to Councilman Shaw, Councilman Shaw, there are certain, uh, vendors. And pro- procedures I go through where the state or the government bids out for everybody. So when they do that, then they present us. It's like my deal. I pay two hundred dollars a year for the city to belong in my deal. My deal is the state, like the mayor said. They go out and do, instead of us having to do the bidding, they do the bidding for us. Then they bring us back to business that we can do business with. So that's how that goes. It, it's not, it's, I don't want you to think, I don't want you to get the misunderstanding that we're sidestepping the purchasing policy. We're right in line with the purchasing policy. It is somebody else has done the bidding for us and we reaping the benefits from their bidding.
Yeah, that's, that's all I wanted to hear. I mean, just ensure that that's very clear to the public. Now, also, with, when you talked about these, uh, D P S vehicles, I know we just purchased a vehicle, uh, not too long ago for D P S. Uh, is that vehicle going to be swapped out in this process as well?
Yes, sir. That vehicle and my vehicle. Because that, that value will allow me to buy, I think I'm getting, I think I'm getting nine of those vehicles or eight of those vehicles. So what, we swapping out our two vehicles, that allows me to get eight new vehicles. So that, that's a plus for us.
Okay, very good.
Okay, yes, sir. And like the mayor said, he bought this to me and I vetted it out. He asked me, he was on me, I'm telling you about this for a year. And I've been, like I said, I've been working on this for a year. So we, we put some time and effort into this so we can make sure it's right. Because we understand what you guys are looking for.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm, and I, and I'm in, I'm in total agreement with it because, I mean, it provides safety for our employee, best service to our citizens, so.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And it saves us money. So let's make sure that we understand that the bottom line, it saves us money. Um, you know, a- and, you know, the point that really needs to be brought out is, you know, again, Eric, you know, talked about Detroit. So we get, Detroit is a much larger organization than the city of East. We get the same price because we're part of this, we're part of Sourcewell.
Yeah, and I think, you know, to the body, uh, especially, um. You know, Plant Moran and, uh, Brian and his team over there, when I say they went through our proposal with the fine-tooth comb. Um, you know, I, I, I felt like I was well done on both sides, the way I got grilled, uh, you know, talking to them. Um, you know, it was one of those, uh, I, I mean, they were following up with me on emails. And literally what they said was, if you don't make it past us, you don't make it to council. Uh, because their job is to obviously protect the public's interest as well. And, um, you know, I, I can tell you when, you know, I felt really accomplished when they were actually buying in. And, you know, the light came on and they were just like, oh, my gosh, this is actually gonna save the city money. Um, so that was one of those, um, y- you know, uh. There, they've also vetted this as well. So, you know, there was a, a lot of work, a lot of preparation to get in front of you. And I know your job is to protect the public and, um, y- you know, I, I respect what you do so much. Because it's public service and it's not easy and it requires rolling up your sleeves and, um, you know, thinking of something and someone. Uh, you know, more than yourself. So I, I, I know exactly what you're doing and I, I respect it so much.
All right, any other questions from council? And then also to council, let's, um, you know, if you have any, we'll make sure that we send, you know, those documentations out. We'll send this out again. If you have any questions for us or if it's something that you're looking for before we get to next council meeting. Please put it on to that email and we'll make sure that we get all those things that we heard tonight, um, those questions answered for you. So thank you, Eric. Thank you, Mr. Bivens. Really appreciate you. All right, moving right along. Incent agenda? What's your pleasure?
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Is there support?
Support.
Been moved and properly supported. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. You're on mute, ma'am. You're on mute. You're on mute. There you go.
Councilmember Wobley?
No.
Councilmember Chisholm?
No.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Council, uh, Mayor Protem Howard?
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes, I was excused absence, so I'm not sure how that works, but yes.
All right. Motion carries. Moving right along, boards and commissions, any boards and commissions going around? Anyone?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Shaw?
I did have, uh. Question on the agenda, certain boards and commissions with, uh, I, I wanted to. Get, uh. My, my, one of my members. Was, uh, former councilwoman, uh, Mitchell. She's on the D D A, so I don't know if that's going to be your appointment, uh. To, to appoint her. I know she has a tenured on there, but I don't know if that's over since she's not here no more. How are we working with that?
Yeah, you know, and I'm gonna tell you, I just think that, uh, Councilwoman Mitchell has just been serving. And, um, you know, just keeping it going. So we just wanted to keep her going as it relates to her service. But I know that we had talked about the, the tenure piece that we needed to move it and provide an expiration date. Because she wouldn't necessarily be tenured in that position. So, um, that's a question for the attorney. Um, and we probably just need to put it in writing, so we're all on the same page with that. Um, but she's continuing to serve and if she, you know, if it's something like a reapportment, I'll just reapport her. Because, you know, they've been pretty much keeping the space together or whatever with D D A.
Right, right. I know, I've, I've been hearing. So do, do we have to make a motion or?
No, I mean, right now, again, you know, it, it is what it is, right? You know? And I don't mean to just say that it is what it is, but.
Yeah, I understand.
And it says tenured by her name. We need to, we know that she's not necessarily tenured. Because, you know, it, it's just what, her not being a member of the body, I think that's what it was.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. So do we need to have her, you know, with a date, you know?
Yeah, I believe, I believe so. So we need to, we probably would need to do something like that, yeah, to appoint her and then with an expiration date. I believe, you know, I don't, I don't know how long the terms is on there. I believe that the terms are like four years.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean.
Oh, there it is, four-year term.
Yes.
This is on there.
Okay, so are you saying, let's do that now? Let's get her in, make her solid. You want to make a motion for that?
Yeah, I, I make a motion that we appoint her to the D D A commission.
I'm okay with that. Is there support?
Support.
Removed and properly supported in discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call, please, City Clerk?
Yes. Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Howard? Mayor Protem Howard?
I'm sorry, yes.
That's okay. Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
And Councilmember Wobley?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, moving right along. Thank you, Councilman Shaw. And, uh, and let's make sure to, um, City Clerk, that we just get that updated as it relates to the expiration day, four years from today. All right, um, any others? Thank you, ma'am. Any others? Okay, hearing none, moving right along, previous business none, first reading, second reading, none, new business, City Clerk, please, item A.
On, on item A, it looks like, um. Mr. Bivens is asking this body to consider authorizing the D P S director to update contacts. And signatures on the, uh, city's water emergency operations plan.
On the, uh, city's water emergency operations plan. Better known as WAP, and submitted to ECO.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
There's support?
Support.
The mood and properly supported, did you get the support?
I did not.
Support by Mayor Protim Howard.
Thank you.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call, please, City Clerk?
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, motion carries. Thank you, item B, City Clerk?
Item B, uh, Mr. Bivens is asking this body. To consider, um, approval for them to accept. The intergovernmental award grant from Wayne County in the amount that's the. Five thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars. And those funds are earmarked to repair doors at the. Booker Dozier Recreation Complex. And. He would also like this body to adopt a resolution stating the same.
What's your pleasure?
Don't move.
There's support?
Support.
You get that support, City Clerk, I know that you're going to.
I did.
This is alright, good.
Thank you.
Alright, any discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call, please?
Mayor Protim Howard?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
And Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Item C, City Clerk? And you don't have to read all of the numbers, so.
Okay, so, thank you. Uh, Tracy Ann Jennings is, um, asking this body to consider. Approval for the purchase of. Four vacant parcels located on the east side of Spruce Street. Uh, between Pine and Andover. Uh, in the amount of twelve hundred and fifty dollars. To Kim Antoinette Russell. For additional land across from Family Home for Gathers. Think I got that right.
You got it.
Okay.
What's your, what's your pleasure?
Don't move.
Is there support?
I have support with a question.
Question, Councilman Williams?
Uh, is this the land of, I, I'm looking at Spruce and, 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 and the land behind it, is this a land? That wa- was, was, that we are sold previous to the, uh, search?
No, this is a little bit further down.
Okay, because I thought they had all that from Andover to Pine. And it's a lot, is it?
Let's, uh, we, we do have our city realtor on the line.
Okay.
Let's have her.
Make sure we clear.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we are clear. And Tracy's on the line as well. Either one of you guys can jump on that. Tracy, do you want to jump in there? I'm pretty sure, I know that.
Good evening. No, this is not the same, uh. These same parcels that were sold to, are you talking the Christ Temple or the church?
Right.
No, not Christ Temple.
Uh, what church?
Uh, what, what, what's Haddon's Church, uh?
Oh, you're talking about years ago? No, that's the Douglas School property. No, that's not it.
Right. That, that's where this land is, through there, right?
It's up by there. On Spruce though. So Douglas is between.
Between Spruce and Hendrick. From Pine to An- An- Andover.
This is on Spruce. So you're, you're getting confused, Councilman. This is, so the Douglas property next to Bishop Haddon's Church. Is on that little slither.
That's William Street.
That's at the corner, that's at the dead end, but I'm talking about the slither in the frontage of it. Is, uh, what is that, Andover, and the backside of it is Pine Street. And that's between Williams and Henry, basically. Well, that ends into Henry, so you got Spruce. Henry, Daddy Anne, and then Williams. That's Douglas Elementary School. So that has nothing to do with this property, if you're talking to winning, because.
When that land ran back there by Spruce, I thought that was part of it, okay?
No.
Alright, okay.
This is totally different.
Alright, I'm.
Yeah, but that land is actually, um, it's, it, it, it was forfeited back to the county, so that's the county's land.
Okay. So we can sell it.
It's the county's land, so we can't sell anything, we don't own it. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, sir.
Alright, Councilwoman Washington, did you have a question?
Oh, no, I was going to ask the same question that my colleague asked, because we usually have, um, some type of graph or picture in here. So, um, I was going to ask the same question.
Their hand up. Mr. Mayor, there's someone with their hand up.
I believe that might be Stephanie.
Yeah, that's Stephanie. Thank you. Steve, can you get her?
Yeah, she wasn't muted and she went back on mute.
Go ahead, Ms. Taylor.
Hi, good evening, Council and Mayor. This is Stephanie Taylor from Murray's Real Estate Services. Each property that we sell, um, for you guys, we do a public records check. And it's showing on public records that this property is still with the city. So usually when, uh, we transfer, um, when a person purchases a property. We have to do a transfer affidavit at the closing to turn into Mario, which is the assessor. Um, the records is showing that you guys are still in ownership. So basically, um, it's, it's the city-owned property. Now, um, I'm not aware of any property getting sold to, um, the church. Maybe it's a different parcel, or maybe it's something that was done in-house. But, um, these particular lots, this residential, um, beside other homes between Spruce and, or Spruce Street. I'm sorry, these particular lots.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Clarification. And just for, for future, uh, reference to as, as well, let's make sure that we have. The, uh, picture a- as well of the property in there. We normally had that in there. I want to make sure that we don't get away from, you know, just being consistent on what we give up. Making sure that we have all that information for the council when they're voting.
Totally noted.
Thank you. Alright, any other questions, comments, concerns as it relates to this? Item? Hearing none, roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
And Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
And Mayor Protim Howard?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. Alright, thank you very much. Now, this brings us to the item on our agenda for public participation. Uh, Councilman Chisholm, if you could, please. Give them the re- rest of the instructions. We're just asking for you to sh- be respectful. In your comments as we move along through the meeting. Councilman Chisholm?
We are at public participation. You have one minute to address this body. If you have joined us by telephone, please use the star nine feature to raise your hand to be recognized. If you have joined us by the Zoom application, please use the raise hand feature to be recognized. After you are recognized and unmuted, please state your name for the record and you have one minute to address this body. At this time, Mr. Mayor, we have one hand raised. The last four digits are two, five, seven, one.
Alright, Chair recognizes two, five, seven, one. Please state your name for the record, please?
Uh, this is Tony Bailey, Ince to Beautification. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Administration and Residence. For, uh, the month of July. Our community-wide cleanup will be the last Saturday of this month, which will be the thirty-first. I'm looking for all to come out and help pick up litter around the city. We want to keep Ince to beautiful. We're going to meet up at Booker Dozier, nine AM.
Rain or shine, right, Tony?
Rain or shine.
Alright, I know you've been on it and doing a really good job with, uh, you know, of course. Your, your right-hand man, Mr. Gabe Henderson. Oh, guys keep on the work.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, Chair recognizes, uh, former Councilwoman Mitchell?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, I, along with a number of my neighbors and I'm sure citizens across the city are quite concerned about. Uh, this fast car business in the city where we have people doing donuts. Racing through our city, uh, in particularly in our neighborhood. We are certain that cars are doing at least fifty miles an hour through Parkwood to Magnolia to Center. At the beginning of the administration now, there was a survey about. Uh, the, uh, street bumps. We call them traffic bumps. And we're wondering where is that, because we really need to try to get those done. Because I'm afraid that someone is going to really be seriously hurt. We've already had people running in the homes. My neighborhood has children playing on the front. And these people have no regard for any traffic laws whatsoever. I have donut, uh, burns in front of my house. I have donut burns down the street in the next block. It's ridiculous. So what can we do to get these, uh, bumps put in?
Yeah, so just, uh, to the, to the, to the question and the comment. Um, we actually did right in the beginning of the year, we talked about the, uh, speed bumps and.
Right.
To the state of Michigan and the state of Michigan through, um, the actual roads. Um, we have monies a- and that's allocated to our city to improve our roads. So we asked for that money to be able to, you know, uh, add additional speed bumps. Well, the state told us no. So then now, the, uh, DPS director along with his staff has written a grant. Um, as it relates to, uh, speed bumps to the federal government. So we're just waiting on a response back because. It's a general fund issue, um, as it relates to that. Now, I understand this, as we are fixing roads. We are looking at ways to be able to, um, you know, work with. You know, the community, if we need to raise some money, however, we need to look at that.
Right.
About that. Um, because one of the biggest things that we found out in talking to, 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 to Chief Riley is that. The police are told not to pursue folks when they're driving at a. A, a fast amount of speed in neighborhoods. So they, 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 they actually have a protocol to tell them to back, you know, to back off. Now, the, the, they get, they're getting smart, and I have to tell you some of the tactics that they're using offline. I don't want necessarily say it to the general public. However, what we're looking to do is petition on the state of Michigan. Because in the state of Michigan right now, it's unconstitutional for us to use cameras, because I've been asking. Um, you know, just our constituents, use your rings, use your phone, take a picture of the license plate. We'll send them a ticket. Well, the state of Michigan is considered unconstitutional, unfortunately, at this time. So we're looking to, you know, rally our legislative agenda to be able to, you know. Help us, because we know it's not only the city of Ince, there's other cities across.
Yes, it is. It is.
Dealing with, uh, speeding. So I know that I've been in contact with Kim Worthy. Um, when we issued tickets here for speeding, um, we, we're, we're adding Kim, uh, I'm sorry, Prosecutor Worthy to. Um, that, you know, that contact information as it relates to saying that these folks are, they were drag racing and she's. Working on, you know, adding additional penalties to them as well.
Uh-huh. Okay, is there anything? Is there anything citizens can do to, uh, help drive home the point that this is something that is greatly needed?
Well, I mean, you know, just what we're doing right now and what you were talking about, you know, and, and, you know, just being able to rally your community within the area. Also to identify, you know, we know who these cars are for the most part of their, your neighborhood. Keep calling it to PD, put it onto the record, you know. Uh, one eight hundred, speak up, you know, if you don't want to, if you want to remain anonymous. Uh, give us a description, you know, be as detailed as possible. And then, you know, with me, you know, I know a few people in the neighborhood, I go and knock on their doors and say, hey, this car that's been over your house. Is going, you know, a numerous amount of speed down the road, you know?
Right.
Going down, so, you know, we don't, we're not asking anybody to be law enforcement, but as it relates to, you know, community. You know, and community policing ourselves, we need to do a better job at that.
Uh-huh. Now, I want you to know that in my neighborhood, we have seen the state police in chases.
Yes.
Uh-huh.
We, we.
I don't know when the city policemen can do it or not, but the state policemen certainly are.
Yep.
Okay, well, we'll wait to see what there is coming down and, uh, hopefully this. That's something that can be done very, very soon, because it is a very, very dangerous situation.
We know that it is definitely a major issue, so we're looking. If we're denied to grant funding, then we're going to have to come to our community and try to rally. Around, you know, some type of mechanism like a GoFundMe, something like that. So to be able to, to, to do that and then have a community forum to be able to see, you know. Where we need to put, we, right now, we have a list. That, you know, people have been calling in through the police department and we've been keeping a record of that list. Of those high-traffic areas and those high-commard areas as it relates to, you know, racing or, you know, speeding. Um, but then I think that, you know, if we, we, we don't get the grant, then we need to go to another level as it relates to getting the community. You know, rally around something. Um, one of my constituents said, you know, we need to do a bottle drive. You know, take all your bottles into your local community store. And, you know, we got a box and this is all just for speed bumps, you know? So we're just looking for creative ideas to be able to pay for it if we're denied the grant. So hopefully we'll know something within the next thirty days. I'm sorry, man, were you still talking? Okay. Alright. Let's go here. Chair, Chair recognizes Charles Blackwell.
Hi, yes, my name is, uh, Charles Blackwell. I have a public announcement for Mayor Patrick Wimbley and Councilwoman Legina Washington. Your secret will come out, the streets are talking, have a great day.
Okay, let's keep right, moving right along. Uh, Chair recognizes Rebecca Daniels.
Yes, good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Um, my, um, comment is regarding the proposal that was, um, submitted or requested by the, uh, council. As it relates to the Rhythm and Blues Hall of Fame. And it was rejected by the council. I was wondering, is there any way we can get that put back on, considering the fact that we, they even denied the, uh, participation of the public? So I'm wondering, is there some kind of way we can get this back? To the council so that at least the, 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 the participation of the public can at least be considered?
That's a good, that's a good question. I know that, um, you know. We, we operate under Robert rules of order, so. You know, someone from the opposing side would have to bring up, bring back up the issue. Um, right now, the issue is dead. Um, and to, you know, one of our colleagues bring it, and I see Councilman Chisholm raising his hand. Uh, Councilman Chisholm, you have something?
Yes, when an item is voted down as city council, as long as it's brought back with different terms, I believe it's legal in order to bring it back up. I was under the impression from all of the different notes that I had seen out on Facebook and whatnot, it was coming up at our next council meeting on the agenda.
That would be great.
Yeah, I wasn't under that assumption, but, uh, you know, we want to make sure that we're being decent in order. I wouldn't necessarily just put anything back on the agenda, because I am the. Person that sets the agenda. So, um, if this body is saying that they want to see something, uh, different. You know, I know that there was some discussion after the fact. You know, however, you know, as it relates to just being decent and in order. Um, if there's something that, you know, we want to, because it's the same, it's the same thing, um, as it relates to a letter of intent. Uh, for the city to, to go into an agreement with, um, the Rhythm and Blues Hall of Fame to be able to start the development. Now. As it relates to the different terms, um, that's something that, you know, we need to talk about. Now, as it relates to the different terms, that's something that, you know, we need to talk about inside of that. If that's something that we want to bring back up, but, you know, until it's brought back up, then, you know, I don't know. But I'm gonna bring it under a different name or what are you saying, Steve?
No, it could come back as a letter of intent, but the terms or the language have to be different. It can't come back as the exact same item.
I will talk to the attorney about that and then we'll move it forward. All right.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Chair recognizes GW. State your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Jennifer Williams on behalf of Operation Refuge, Mother's Pantry and Camp Inspire. Mother's Pantry and Operation Refuge wanted to let the residents know that we have a few cleaning buckets. For those that experience flood damage and still might have basement cleanup that they are undergoing. Buckets include a bucket sponge, some disinfectant, trash bag gloves and a few other items. If you are in need, if you are in need, please send a text message to two four eight six nine two four eight four seven, two four eight six nine two four eight four seven. Again, if you are in need of cleaning supplies and disinfectant from our recent flooding, we do have a few buckets that are still left unavailable. Secondly, Mother's Pantry is open on Wednesdays from ten to twelve fifteen for food service. If there's anyone in the community that are in need of diapers, we do have a limited supply of diapers on hand. And Camp Inspire will be up and running within the next week. So for young ladies, fifth through twelfth grade that are interested in STEM-based opportunities and experiences centered around the environment this year, please visit our Facebook page at Camp Inspire STEM Program and Summer Camp. We do have one event really quick on July fifteenth, any young ladies, sixth through twelfth grade that would like to participate in learning how to trout fish and fly fish, July fifteenth, Inkster Park. That flyer will be forthcoming and that information will be sent out. You can send a text message of interest to two four eight six nine two four eight four seven as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chair recognizes Gloria Alexander.
Yes, sir. I am, well, thanks for allowing me to speak, Mayor and Council. I would like to find out what happens or who I need to contact regarding the water pressure on my block. Several, myself and several of the neighbors are having a problem with very low water pressure. Who do we need to contact?
Okay, let's see here. Mr. Bivens?
Yes, sir.
If you could, please give her a number, she can contact, please.
The number is three one three five six three nine seven seven four. Call the Department of Public Service. At what area are you in, ma'am?
I live on Lovett, off of Andover.
Okay. Okay, yeah, just call my office in the morning and get that to my administrative assistant. And we'll have our field guys come out and take a look at it. And then I'll have my engineer come over there and take it. You said the whole block is experiencing low pressure?
As far as I know, everyone has had a problem from time to time. I've not had an opportunity to check with every single neighbor. But I had a plumber come and check my home personally. I've paid to have it checked out and the plumber indicates to me that it's a city issue and that's why I'm asking.
Okay, but yes, I will, I will. Okay, thank you. Yeah, call my office in the morning. We'll follow up with you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Senator, thank you. All right, Chair recognizes Juan Bradford. You started.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How are you?
Good, how are you?
I want to start by casting a rainbow, so to speak, or positive feedback. I want to personally say thank you, Mayor, and I want to call your names out individually. Councilman Watley, thank you. Councilman Chisholm, thank you. Councilman Shaw, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Howard, thank you. Mayor Williams, thank you. Mayor Washington, I mean, Councilman Washington, Washington, thank you. As a citizen of the great city of Inkster, you guys rose above and beyond our expectations. When we had this big flooding, I know you had nothing to do with it, but you did all that you could do within your power to make it right and you guys did a stellar job. Absolute stellar job. You guys rose to the occasion and we as citizens saw it. The bell was ringing and we saw you doing what you had to do to get the thing right and we appreciate that as citizens. Thank you very much. My next thing, as far as, I'd like to thank Mr. Bivens personally. It seems like he put a lot of hard work in what he was doing with his due diligence at taking care of the cars. If I can speak briefly as a retired fireman, I know the effects of working and operating with cars that are outdated. And sometimes as citizens can say more than what the actual workers in the city can say. But let me say this, as a retired fireman, thank you for considering exponentially beefing up the cars in the city of Inkster. We're a stellar city and we just want to operate as employees or those who are servants to the citizens with the best that we can and you guys are providing that. So each council member and each, each person that's considered to be on that board, thank you for considering. I know you're doing your due diligence, but I think in the long run, it looks like we're about to hit our home run on this topic. And I appreciate what you guys are doing. I really, really do. Now, as it pertains to the last thing, the Rhythm and Blues Hall of Fame, I speak in behalf of trying to get it back onto the roster so that we can move on in a positive note at getting it done. I wish that we can get it done. That's my prayer. But I just, I'm speaking on behalf of it. I'd like for us to be able to reconsider it, reword it so it can be back on the docket for conversation. I hate to see it go through our fingers and not have it. We deserve it as a city of Inkster. Yeah, that's all I have and I just want you guys all to know that the citizens are rooting for you guys and we thank you for all the hard work that you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford. Chair recognizes Robert Turley.
Hello, I'm Mr. Mayor and hello, City Council. I just want to thank you and the council for bringing up the possibility or considering the possibility of continuing to consider the National Rhythm and Blues Hall of Fame in Inkster. I think it, I've said before and I just want to reiterate, I really think it belongs in Inkster. I think there are reasons of history and legacy that it has to be in Inkster. It only should be, but I really think it has to be in Inkster. And I just want to thank you and the City Council for continuing to consider it because it is really very important.
Thank you so much, Mr. Turley. Appreciate that. All right, moving right along. Thank you so much. City Clerk? We do have a new city clerk. And of course, you know, I'm excited to introduce Verna Chapman to the citizens of Inkster. Of course, the council approved Verna's appointment and we're really, really happy to have her with us. Oh, Verna, you have anything for us?
Well, it's been a wonderful first day and I thank you all for this opportunity to serve such an interesting community. I think it's, it will be a good partnership. And I'm not gonna belabor, belabor the meeting with more, but I do appreciate this opportunity and I look forward to working with all of you and getting to know you better.
All right. Moving right along. City Treasurer, you have anything for us tonight?
Can be unmuted.
There you are. We can hear you.
Okay, you can hear me now? Okay, I couldn't be unmuted for a minute. Yes, our budget books are ready. Mayor Pro Tem Howard, I just gotta put some labels on the different tabs for the different sections, but budget books are ready to be picked up at my office.
All right, would you like those budget books to be put into, if you'd like them to be put into your, I think, can it be put into your boxes? It's kind of big. Oh, yeah, just, just meet right up and get them directly from the treasurer. If you have any questions at the time, you'll be able to do it. And we modeled them off of the ones that we received for nineteen and twenty's budget. All righty, moving right along. Thank you, City Treasurer. Councilman Shaw, anything for us?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that I get a chance to welcome my new city clerk in, in hopes that her future endeavors with the city will be a positive outcome. And I just want to say, you know, welcome, welcome, welcome. I do have a few things, Mr. Chair. I was thinking of the, I don't have it right offhand, but we hired a company that was supposed to give us a breakdown of fifty percent of what we were going to say. But I think this was the last treasurer proposed. I don't know if.
Actually, that's, actually, it's a bottom-line concept.
Yeah, that's what it was. That's what it was.
Yeah, so that's, 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 we're working through it. So we want to make sure that they have all the information correct. So it's a lot of information that we had to go through because I wanted to make sure that we covered everything. And that's something that I actually brought, that's something that I brought to the table. So I am, I do have a relationship with bottom line to make sure that we're getting, you know, everything that we need to get. And they're working on there right now.
Okay, so, so are we going to get the, the, the monthly reports again? Are they going to start back or?
Yep, yeah, we're definitely starting those back up. So you'll receive those. We do have the ones from last month. And we'll get to you and then, of course, you know, this month.
Also, at eleven forty-nine Harrison Street, I do have a sinkhole there. If, if, if I can get some help from Jerome.
You got DPW number, right, Councilman Shaw?
Yeah, I will send out, I will send out some pictures of it. Matter of fact, I got a couple of sinkholes that, that we have over in the area that I do want to get him addresses on. But eleven forty-nine Harrison Street, I do have that address for you right there. And you may mention about, you know, the unconstitution about having cameras, but I just want to, I just want.
Not having cameras, taking pictures of people's license plates and then giving them tickets. You know how they do over in Ohio? Driving too fast, they flash your license plates and then you get a ticket in the mail.
Okay. Oh, yeah, 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 I mean.
So that's, that's what we're talking about. So it's unconstitutional to do that in Michigan currently.
I definitely want to encourage our residents to make sure that they get cameras because it not only keeps them, helps keep them safe, but it can also help in some of the solving of crimes as well that's being committed in, in, in the city. You know, I mean, those are great for, for investigations. So I do want to continue to encourage residents to get cameras on their property. And I will follow up tomorrow with Ms. Walls concerning, there's a car, a fire car. I think that caught on fire is right on Middle Belt and Glenwood over there by those apartments over there. So I definitely will follow up with her with some pictures concerning that car. But if you can roll through and check that out, because it definitely is an eyesore on Middle Belt there. And police patrol, police patrol on, matter of fact, Magnolia Street and Woodland Street, police patrol on Magnolia and Woodland Street. And I do want to thank code enforcement and the DPS department for removing those large branches that we had over there on Woodland Street. They had been there for some time and now they, they are removed. And like I said, again, I will be following up with Sergeant Wall as well with these concerns as well, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
And that's all I have, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilwoman Washington? You're, you're on mute, Councilwoman Washington.
I would also like to welcome City Clerk Verna Chapman. Welcome to the team. Thank you. Okay, and also I am requesting police presence on Glenwood along with Meadow Lane. We have a lot of issues with nuisance issues, loud music and cars blocking the driveway. So again, police presence on Glenwood and also Meadow Lane. And that is all I have for this evening.
All right. Councilman Chisholm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to say to Ms. Chapman, welcome aboard. And then also want to thank all the employees and their efforts during this past storm that adversely affected residents all over. I want to give a special thanks to Captain Cos who hosted me at the police department last week in the emergency operations, operation center where I got to sit alongside him and talk to residents and just see how that the police department were assisting residents with getting the materials and filling out the damage assessment forms before the timeline so they can be turned into Wayne County. So that information could be funneled up to the state. What I'm hopeful of this year is that, or I shouldn't say this year because the last one was twenty nineteen, but this go-around is that FEMA does provide not only our community, but the entire state of Michigan with the assistance that we deserve because, no, there's an infrastructure issue all around. It keeps getting worse every time we get heavy rains and waters like that. And there's nothing we can do as a financially strapped community except really just tell the citizens there, there is going to be all right, when it's not going to be all right. Because we have an infrastructure issue that not only affects our city, but affects the entire state that needs to be resolved. And so I do empathize and sympathize, sympathize sometimes. I feel sorry for our residents who are affected. Let me just break it down and put it that way. This shouldn't have happened and they shouldn't have to keep going through this. I know some of our residents have been hit three times and it's terrible. Also, with the Rhythm and Blues Hall of Fame, I was eating breakfast with the state representative probably last week or so and I saw one citizen who voiced his concerns about the no vote from the last council meeting. And then also got worried that, you know, some of the clergy in the city were upset as well. So I did reach out to the president of the Ministry of Alliance, Pastor Hearn and others. And I let them know, you know, that I heard about the comments and whatnot and we had great discussions about it. And like I said earlier, I'm fine with the issue coming back to the table. I said it at that particular council meeting, I formally invited the participants of the Rhythm and Blues Hall of Fame to come back. And like I said, three of us at least were on the council meeting saying we did not agree with the terms in the letter of intent just in an effort to make sure that my voice was, came across clearly. I sent an email that night and I sent one the following day or so. So I do encourage my colleagues to go back and review that email just to see because I believe Councilwoman Howard might have responded the other day. And I believe Councilwoman Watley, I did talk to her on the telephone. But again, I send those mass emails so we all have an opportunity to voice it so we don't have to keep picking up the phone, calling one another all day long, having different debates or deliberations. But again, I would encourage my colleagues to go back and review it so we can have a productive discussion and get it back on the agenda for the next meeting. Because from what I saw, it was already coming back on the agenda. Now, that was the court of public opinion. That wasn't a formal agenda or anything like that. And I know we can't take that and, and, and as gospel. But that's what I have to say for now and I do look forward to these upcoming conversations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilman Chisholm. Councilman Williams?
Yes, several things, Mr. Mayor, and I'll be trying to make them real quick. First of all, I'd like to welcome the new clerk to the city of Inkster. And number two, I'm concerned. And, and you know, I'm just listening to Chisholm when he just got from talking about how he got together and it was helping the people. But I had a lot of people who, who called me about, they, they, they turned them down the application for the flood damages. And I, and I, and I thought that everyone could pick them up. They're talking about, they, they gave out all of them and nobody getting that. I, I want to clear that up, you know, because I figured that everyone who had a flood should be able to turn into an application.
What, what, let me make sure that we're on the same page with that. What, what, let me make sure that we're on the same page with that. You said that your, some of your constituents said that they weren't allowed to turn them in?
They say it was too late.
As it relates to? So let me just, let me just clear this up. So it was two things happening. One was we had to submit to the county as a collective community, just like every other community in the county, our flood damages. That report had to be to the county by July the sixth at noon. So what we did was we said, okay, on Thursday, we had a, a deadline on July the first for flood assessment damages with the general populace of the community. Now that didn't stop you from still putting in and filling out the form. The form is still online at cityofinster.com, flood damage report. You can still come over to the DPW Department and give them your, um, information. I think it's just a lot of things were going around as it relates to the deadline for, this is just an assessment. So like Councilman Chisholm was saying, so, you know, hopefully with everybody, you know, given the information up and we're, you know, have a unified front from the county to the state and to the federal government. Then we're able to get assistance from FEMA. So this is not a claims form. This is not a form that you're filling out where you're getting assistance or getting help. This is, this was only for information for us to collect, so submit to the county. County submit to the state and then the federal government for help for FEMA.
So are you telling me, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, uh, FEMA is not in the area?
When you say FEMA is not in the area, what do you mean?
Not helping anyone with these floods, uh?
Not as of, not, not as of, not as of yet. I know that, uh, FEMA is supposed to be coming out this week sometime. Um, you know, but not as of yet. Um, this is nothing that, you know, FEMA said that we're going to help the state of Michigan. Um, our governor, Governor Whitmer declared a, a state of emergency for our area. That was the first step. Second step is what we've been doing, collecting all of the collective damage as a community within the county of Wayne to be able to submit with the other communities. So we'll be able to hopefully get some assistance.
And so these forms can be picked up where?
Yes, so you can still pick up the forms over at DPW, um, on Princeton Street or here at City Hall. Or you can go online, uh, you can go online and fill the form out at cityofinster.com. Flood damage report is right on the homepage. And, you know, submit, click, upload your videos, uh, upload your pictures. Auto write directly to us and all that stuff is going right to Meyer Roots. And DPW.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to speak, um, and I just want to say to my colleagues and other people, I, I, I work pretty hard in my area. I work pretty hard all over the city of Inglewood and, and, and a lot of people can testify to that. But I'm really working hard in my area because, because if you look at District One, it has really, really been neglected when it comes down to trying to get possible things into that area. Okay? And when, when, we look at, we look at all of the problems that we're trying to do, you know? And I, I was, and I'm really the reason why I'm bringing it up and, and, and Chisholm know what I'm saying about the Hall of Fame. Because that would have been something that would draw people to District One. Okay? If you look at what we got there now, we have, we have nothing to really draw in, in, into that area. You know, everybody, I know everybody's trying to in, in, improve the city of Inglewood where we can get things going, where we can draw, draw people into here. But the Hall of Fame would have been something that people could come from out of town and visit and, and, you know, and, and talk about the city of Inglewood and what we trying to do. So I hope he will be considered putting it back on the agenda. Put it back on the agenda. Now, another thing, Mr. Mayor, um, and, and got, uh, Councilman Shaw. We supposed to be having budget meetings. I want to know when they're going to be set up and when we can get started on it.
Well, that's between you, Councilman Shaw, and the treasurer. So make the call.
Okay, well, I, I just want to know the procedure because.
Yeah, you guys are the committee. You guys set it up and meet.
Okay, alright.
Remo, we can do something tomorrow if you, if you're available. I don't know if you available tomorrow?
Well, you gotta call the treasurer. The treasurer does have a day job.
As available, I'll be there tomorrow.
I'm, I'm here.
Yeah, I mean, he, he at work anyway, uh, Mr. Chair, he at work.
Yeah, but I mean, he may be working on something, so.
I may be working on some, I will be working on something. But I'll be there, don't worry.
So you guys set it up. There it is, right there. He said it, so make it happen.
One o'clock. I think I'm at one. I think I'm at one. I know you work in the daytime.
You guys work.
We're working, we're working out.
I'm, I'm accommodate you in the evening. So I know you'd be available in the evening. I'll accommodate that, but not at one.
You guys figure that, figure that out another, uh, you know, offline. Councilman Williams, what else you got?
Uh, I just want to thank, uh, all of the people that came out during the cleanup. Uh, uh, the mayor, the mayor, uh, he turned down my, my challenge. Uh, but the challenge is still on, Mr. Mayor.
Nobody's scared of you, man, or not. I'm ready. I'm ready. I got.
Even when it was raining, we was out there. Okay? Be able to make the July one.
That's the one I'm gonna show up on.
The, the, the challenge is on.
Okay, sound good.
But I, 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 I'll be out of town in, in, in July, so.
Ready. I'll bring some folks out. We'll get it.
But, but August, but August, it'll be there.
Okay.
I'll be ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, and that's, that's all I had. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm just gonna get some of the things done. And don't forget the other projects that we have in that area that we're supposed to be trying to meet on.
Yeah, we definitely, we definitely will, definitely will.
I'm setting aside.
I got you.
Alright.
Alright, we're, we're, we're working on that. I got you. Alright, Councilwoman Wiley?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I have, uh, several things. First of all, I'd like to talk, uh, I'd like to start off by asking about the IT Department. Um, we are getting so much spam email until I'm afraid to open things, you know? I'm afraid that I got PTSD because I'm afraid I'll open something and I'll knock down the whole system. Because it's, it's constant. It's more than we've ever had before. What is being done about this? Because I get emails from you saying, Sandra, can you, uh, stop by and talk to me for a minute? Uh, and help me with a project. I'm like, that's, that's not us.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Yeah, for sure. So I'll definitely, um, I know that we've been going back and forth and, um, Dustin from, uh, IT from Nurse Express has addressed this body with that information as it relates to what we're doing. I'll make sure that I'll forward that back to you again, but just for the general public, understand this, this is not just the city of Inglewood. If you've been watching the news as it relates to, um, a bombardment of spam and hacking has been going on and, and not only, you know, just local mom and pop stores, but, you know, major universities and major corporations. So it's a Microsoft Cloud issue that we're working on right now and actually filtering out those spams. So it's people that sit, just like we're living in a virtual world right now, is just sitting right now looking to hack or to be able to, the end result, figure out how they can get some money out of your pocket. So we've had, uh, you know, people that's been a victim of that, um, outside the organization, within the organization. So I truly apologize, but know that we're working in conjunction with Homeland Security. I did see an email, we talked about Homeland Security, you know? Um, some folks said basically, you know, we don't want to hear about that, but however, that's what we're doing. And we have been aggressively, uh, working with IT on, on that and making sure that we had those supports. Make sure we had those firewalls. I know that you haven't had it in the past, um, as it relates to that. Uh, I understand that we're living in a different world now. This is, you know, the virtual age. Uh, right now is evident of us being online virtual. So people are, you know, more susceptible to, you know, anything that's coming off the computer as it relates to emails. So definitely know that we're working on that. And one, two, three net will be up and live within the next two weeks as it relates to our fiber optics and making sure that we have the right hardware and software to be able to protect our organization.
And that will eliminate this problem or at least minimize it?
Yes, ma'am. I definitely would go with minimize the problem.
Okay, because it really is bad, you know, right now. Okay, the second thing is when are taxes due out?
Alright, that's a question.
Yeah, they usually, uh, come out the first of July. And I've had residents call and say, are we getting taxes this year? I said, really? You're gonna ask me if you getting taxes? You get taxes every year. But they want to know when.
Mr. Green, can you answer that question quick?
Uh, yes, they should be out. July first was the actual date for, for the taxes to be sent out. So I, when I get into the office tomorrow, I'll check and see, uh, check on the status of that, but they are absolutely correct.
Now, we don't know when they, we're gonna get them. We know when we were supposed to. We knew that.
Yeah, it sounds like they've been sent out already, Councilwoman. So we're just gonna, you know, to the, to the printer to actually send them out?
Oh.
So we want to see what the status is.
Yeah, they've been sent to the printer already, so.
Okay. And my third question is just, uh, one that, um, eh, are we charging the black clubs, the block clubs, uh, twenty-five dollars to have a meeting at the rec center?
Uh, we haven't had any block club come before us as of yet to, 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 to meet. And, uh, I would, you know, say that we wouldn't charge our block clubs to do that because they're block.
That's what I thought too, when someone called me and told me they had to pay twenty-five dollars an hour and they were there for two hours and they paid fifty dollars to the rec center. And considering that, Middle Park Manor.
And when was that?
This was last week I got the call.
Okay, I know that, I know that our treasurer, let me say this, that our treasurer may have inadvertently done that. And Mr. Green, maybe you can speak up to that because he's been working with me, um, with the Parks and Rec Department as well. Um, because he has Parks and Rec background. However, he's been on me just about, you know, charging everybody. So he's been collecting, collecting, so.
Here's the deal, since this, since the rec center is passed by Millich and those are the area residents, and since you've had this big push for block club participation within the city, I would think that that would be one of the perks that they could utilize.
Totally agree. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, alright.
Yes, now, can I speak to that? That I, I never charged anybody twenty-five dollars, no block club for anything. So if they did give money to someone, we want to know who that was.
Okay, alright, very good.
And all that good stuff. Thank you, Daryl.
Okay, now the next thing I have is, uh, exciting news. And I want to ask if Marilyn Fields is on this call, if she can hear us. I gave her the information to come on, but Marilyn Fields has opened a new Inglewood Community Resource Center on, uh, Inglewood Road, at thirty-eight oh one Inglewood Road. It's called God's Work, Our Hands. And, uh, what's happening there is they have tons of people who have been donating items to them and they give this away free to Inglewood residents. However, it's done by appointment. So what you can do is you can call three one three eight two zero three seven four six. That's the business number. And you can make an appointment to come in and look at all the things they have. They have clothing, they have shoes, they have, um, health and beauty. They have, uh, uh, all kinds of, uh, computer equipment. They also do a food pantry from two to four on Thursdays at Womack Temple. So they're providing a lot of things and they, um, they will give you, uh, they're five oh one C three. So you can do, uh, your, um, you know, uh, tax deductions on that. They will be giving sewing classes. They will be teaching vegan, vegan food classes. And they want to get an exercise class started. So they're doing all of this and it's for the citizens of Inglewood. And when I asked them, well, what's your mission statement so I can tell people? They said, we just want to help Inglewood. So this is a new Community Resource Center called God's Hands, Our Work. And it's located at thirty-eight oh one Inglewood Road. Uh, and they're waiting for people to participate and come in. They'll take volunteers too. Hello?
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
Okay, yeah, that was it. I thought that was really great because I went down there and took a look. And they have tons of things and they're servicing tons of people already. So this is something for the community to get behind. And, um, like I said, Ms. Fields was supposed to be on the call tonight and, you know, speak her information for herself. But, um, okay.
No, that's great. And if you could, please, if you could just put that into a email for us and then we'll make sure we get that on our public access channels. Social sites and all that good stuff. Good work.
Now, this last thing I have has caused me a great deal of concern. And what it happens to be is that, um, I went over the check registry. And I saw a check in the amount of four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars um, that was issued to Dennis Black on May twenty-eighth. And I want to know how that happened since this man hasn't worked for us in over almost a year.
Yeah, so that was, I issued that check to Dennis Black for the work that he did for us back during that time between, uh, Scharde Fleming leaving and, um, Tracy and Jenny's coming aboard for those, um, for the invoice that he had submitted to us. He had originally submitted an invoice for eight thousand dollars. After I went through pretty much all the documentation on what it was that he did for us and I finally issued a check to him.
Okay, is the fact that you went a dollar under council's approval amount have anything to do with this? Because I believe at the time he submitted that, council pushed back on it, especially me. And I have the emails here I can read to you. You stated you would handle that matter personally. Is this your idea of personally?
Well, it's not necessarily personally. It is within my administrative rules. So I didn't necessarily, um, you know, say it's, you know, under a dollar to bring it to the council. It was just making sure that, you know, I paid the young man for the work that he did for us during that time because it was.
But you said you would handle it personally. And personally is not with taxpayer dollars. I read what you're saying.
I can't recall.
I will read what you said right here.
But let me say. No, I was just saying, you said personally, I am the person that's in charge of administration.
Yeah, but we're in charge of the money, okay? And every, and. Okay, Councilman, I had sent back to you that it didn't qualify for closed session. We don't have no business paying him, blah, 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 blah. You sent back, Councilwoman Wylie, you are right. This should never have become an issue for council to, uh, deal with. And I withdraw my request and will work it out personally with Mr. Black.
Correct.
That's what you said. But you use taxpayer dollars. And that's one thing that I've been talking to you about since you started this.
Understand that he did the work, so.
No, he didn't. We pushed back on that. Half the work that he submitted was not work that he did. And we sent that back to you in an email. But may I continue?
I am the administrator, so.
May I continue though? But you're using taxpayer dollars and it seems like the forty-nine ninety-nine was a way to circum, you're paid him. Nobody authorized that. You paid him that amount.
Person that can do that within my right.
No, sir, you are not the person that can do that because you are not omnipotent. You are just.
It's not that, Councilwoman.
Okay, here's the deal. That check was voided to Dennis Black, okay?
Okay.
It was voided, but you turned around and sent the same amount. Reissued it to Arcane Solutions in the amount, the same amount, forty-nine ninety-nine. Now, can you please send this body an invoice for that money? Because even though you didn't have to get five thousand dollars approval, you still have to tell us what that money was used for.
Yeah, that's, that's not a problem. We do have.
Okay, you said, and can you tell us tonight what services Arcane provides for the city of Inglewood? What did they do in twenty and twenty-one that, uh, we could allot them a forty-nine thousand, I mean, a forty-nine hundred ju- dollar check?
Yeah, it was actually.
Especially being that, um, Dennis Black is the po- political consultant for them who manages political clients, candidates and elected office. I thought our law. Who manages political clients, candidates, and elected office. I thought our lobbyist was from uh GCSI. And our consultant was Kenneth Cole. So what did Arcane do for us politically? That we needed to pay him, cuz you just said this money was for Dennis Black's services rendered. And now you're saying Arcane Solutions, which is a political group.
Okay, so let, let's, let's make sure that we're all on the same page here. So Dennis Black is Arcane Solutions. Arcane provided uh services to the city of Inkster. As it relates to the FTCV grants, the Community Development Block Grants, and also the COPH Grants.
Any political assistance to us for candidates and things of that nature? Okay, so the next thing I would need to know is that um. Um, you should also note that Arcane Solutions does not have any up-to-date filings with Laura. So how are we to know that this isn't a ghost company of some kind? I can't find any legitimate paperwork on them. And if you recall in previous emails, you requested payment for Dennis Black in the amount of eighty-six thousand dollars. And that was on September eighteenth, twenty twenty. And after a few exchanges, the, from the members of this body. Who sought to gain clarity on what we were paying him for, you then stated, like I stated, that you would handle the matter yourself. Now, I was unable to locate a budget or budget amendment where um. Where uh you approved uh this money, so.
There was no budget amendment needed. I mean, you keep going back and referring to the under five thousand dollars, which is in my.
But you can't go under five dollars in an effort to circumvent council's approval.
Well, I didn't say that I did that. You said that I did that.
Okay, you indicated that you would personally take care of this uh eighty-six hundred dollars. Now, this is the end of this? There's no more money that'll be going out to Dennis Black? Okay, so he settled for the forty-nine ninety-nine with your, you as the only person to approve it, correct?
Because it's within the charter. Me as the mayor. The budget was approved. Personally, like you try to make it like it's personal, I'm the mayor.
But you are not omnipotent. You don't get just to spend money cuz you feel like it. That's what this council is.
Trying to make it like I'm, like I'm, like I feel like it. It was not that I felt like. Did the work.
This is the, that's, that's what you said. We have nothing. We have nothing to substantiate that. And if you're going to continue to uh. Use your own personal ideas without advising council on these things. This is the third time this has happened.
That is not the case.
Especially with this man, you have um.
I don't know what you mean by with this man, what are you?
Well, I'm gonna tell you. I'm gonna tell you, you know? And it seems to me, like I said, the amount being one dollar under the five thousand dollar dress hole, threshold seems to be uh. A deceptive way to get around council's approval.
It's not a deceptive, this is in the charter, ma'am. What are we talking about? Attorney's on the line, ask the attorney right now.
I know what the charter says. Remember, I told you, I told you, but you still continue. You still continue to insist on enriching your friends with taxpayer dollars. Times before. You can't do that. You can't do that. It is in the charter what you. You got in office where things like this are concerned. Yes, it's my opinion, and I have facts to back it up. I have facts to back it up. And it seems that you're still trying to enrich Dennis Black. This is the third time.
That is not the case. I paid the man for a service that he did for our administration, period.
Well, the, a year and a half, a year later. A, a year later?
It took that long to make sure because we had two treasures that we went through. So I wanted to make sure that I did it right.
Nope, nope, this tech, this.
So I don't know what you want me to do.
Hello, I want you to do your job and do it right. I want you to do it by the book. That's what I want you to do. And I'm telling you that um you, taxpayer dollars, which smacks of almost corruption.
And I believe that you should retract that.
You circumvented the process.
No, I didn't.
Yes, you did. Because this man, there is no proof that this man ever did this work. This is another way that you have disrespected this council, and you've done it over and over again.
Okay, ma'am.
You are disrespectful to this council. You have been since day one. You are not transparent. You are not.
And you don't work with me, so how about that? So if I call you or email you.
Because you don't work with the rest of us. Everything you do, you do on your own, okay? You say you want to work with us, but you never run anything by us. We learn about it after the fact. You spend the money, we learn about it after the fact. No transparency in your government at all.
Well, thank you.
Thank me for what?
For whatever you're talking about right now. What else you got to say?
You don't know what I'm talking about?
I'm, I'm past that right now. I don't know what you're talking about.
I'm talking about you using taxpayer dollars for things that haven't been approved by council.
Well, they don't have to be approved by council. You keep saying that out in the public. You know, once the council approves a budget. As long as it's within the line items and it's not over five thousand dollars per that budget, then I don't have to come back to council. But I try to keep council informed on anything that I'm doing. If I don't have a relationship with you or other council members on this body, that's up to you guys, not to me. My office is open. My office is open and you can.
We come to your office, you will say one thing on one side of the door, and then when you come out, it's different. With the marijuana ordinance. You agreed to certain things on one side, and then when you came out, you said that was not the case. And that's maybe why. Things can't be trusted that you say.
Okay, I hear you.
So like I'm saying, this is wrong, what you did here, where Dennis Black is concerned. It is wrong.
Well, then do what you have to do as a council.
Because we can see at this point, you have no respect for this council. You don't wanna be transparent. And you will not do what is right by the citizens of Inkster.
We know what side of the coin you're on, so.
I didn't give nobody five thousand dollars for nothing. Cut this out, y'all. I mean, hey, come on now. We can keep going on and on, y'all. Come on now. It's not even funny anymore. Once again, allows this man to get away with that.
My y'all, and you don't need to be in this seat. You are a threat.
This is, I mean, come on now, you the chief. You supposed to be able to take, no, you supposed to be able to take anything and be cool.
I've been cool. But you're not just gonna keep trying to drag me through the mud and I'm not saying anything. Come on now.
Yeah, you proved that with uh Charles Blackwell, which is why we being sued.
Uh, I don't know what you mean by that. Charles Blackwell been suing us from day one, so I don't have anything to do with Charles Blackwell, which is your friend, not mine. Anything else, Councilwoman Wiley?
There are tons of things.
Speak on them.
Mister Mayor, we need to conduct business, okay?
This is public comment right now.
We bothering him back, but that's not doing any good. Let, let her speak and then let's move on. I mean, that's how you supposed to be. Just let her rebut, and then you, when it's your turn.
I know how I'm supposed to be, but I'm not about to continue letting a person.
You the chief financial, I mean, you the chief. Look at Obama. Obama took all kind of criticism. That's what we need to do. I mean, she has a right to. We just need to conduct business, okay? Let her speak, cuz she has a right, and then you have a right to rebut her in your speech. I mean, you keep going back and forth. Just let her talk. I mean, she deserved, everybody deserves to have a, a say so. Whether or not you would like it or not, we have to respect it. That's what we have to do on here. We have to respect. I mean, we, that's what I'm saying. We all need to do that. We all need to have some kind of respect. We may not like what the other person said, but we have respect. But you keep rebuking back to her. Let her speak and be done, and then we can move on to something else. It is nine thirty. We are on here too long. Not to you.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Okay, I just wanna say thank you, uh, congratulations to our new city clerk.
All right, call for a German. Oh, move. Your support?
I'm speaking. I, I didn't know I was on mute, mute. I'm speaking. I'm sorry. I'd like to thank, I'd like to congratulate the city clerk.
Thank you.
And hopefully that you will enjoy us, and I'm gonna enjoy you, so thank you. I have an announcement to make from Octavia Smith. Um, Inkster Farmers Market every Wednesday until October the sixth, twenty twenty-one. Four P M to seven P M. And um, that's all she had to me. Uh, she said she had no sound. Okay, now, for me. On this land that. Inkster High used to be on. Were there any stipulations when they gave us back that property? If we sell, if we lease, do we have to pay that student debt, that student loan back, that loan back? That Inkster Public Schools that gave the city of Inkster before they closed it down. I would like to know that. I would like to know. Uh, well, no, I'm not gonna say I'd like to know. I've got a lot of calls. People are for it and people are against it. Well, let me explain something to everyone about me. I'm thinking of the city of Inkster. I've gotten calls saying that. I betrayed the mayor. I did all of that. I took an oath to protect the city of Inkster. Yeah, I was behind Patrick. I'm still behind him. But I can't disagree with him. It's okay for me to disagree with him. So let me let the public know that, okay? But I took an oath to protect the city of Inkster, not a person. So when I get these taxes, I'm appalled about that, cuz I got kinda mad. Because I thought it was ridiculous. We are grownups, y'all. Now, we don't have anything in the city of Inkster. Nothing. Okay, but it doesn't, now, it's not your turn. So just hold your thoughts. But here's the thing. My reasoning for turning the Hall of Fame down is that we need revenue. We got cute buildings up on Michigan Avenue that we ain't getting a dime for. Our residents are in cu- it are getting higher water rates. We didn't be paying taxes for services that we are not getting. So how many, how much more do you want for us to just sit there and just give, 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 give? And without us getting anything. We have nothing on Inkster. Nothing on Michigan Avenue for us to stop and go get us something to eat. Nothing. Now, when you talk about the Hall of Fame, I don't have any problem with that. But pay the dollar amount that is owed for that land, four hundred thousand dollars. That's what I want you to pay. And you can do what you wanna do. Now, what, George, hold up. Now, George, hold up. You out of order. Mayor, what's wrong? Are you, do you have the floor or what, you are the mayor? I want to know, before we make anything, I wanna know the stipulations on when we got that land back. I don't know it, so someone can tell us, because the school. Has a loan that we would never pay off. The debt, we would never pay it off. So now, if we decide to sell that land, does that four hundred thousand dollars? However much we pay selling for, does it go back to the state? That's what I wanna know. And if so, then that's what we should be trying to do. Pay down some of this debt that they, that the city got. For the school district. So how would I look like putting something there for free, non ta- you know, non taxable? And we owe debt. Those people who's paying those taxes, they deserve to have some kind of relief. The ones who was in the school districts that's still paying for the taxes that we don't have school dish. So that was my question. But I just wanna know, I just wanna just tell citizens. Read, read. Don't think, because you like me, you go when I say, read. If I tell you something, go look it up. But I don't want another text saying that I betrayed the mayor, because I have not. But I can't disagree with him. I voted for him. But I can't disagree. And I am disagreeing with a lot of stuff, but that's okay. That's me. I'm supposed to disagree. But for, for somebody to have the nerve to text me, I thought that was crazy. Um, another thing I'm gonna have, and that's the last thing, the visibility study. Let them do that. Because for what they're saying. Uh, the traffic that they gonna have hotels, and they got all these investors. Where's the investors calling us? And saying, hey, can we buy this land so we can put a hotel on there? I don't see that. Maybe what we should do is a council. No, let them do it. Let them do it and it's, wait, let them do it to see whether or not if it's even, if it's even possible. The traffic, I don't think so. But what we need to be doing is talking to Mayor Dugan. The city of Wayne, all the mayors, and find out Dearborn, Dearborn Heights. What, what are you doing? Why are you thriving? That's what we need to do. We need to sit down with some people and say, what, you had somebody come in to give you a leaf of faith? And then everything tripled now. George, be quiet.
Why would you say that though?
George, be quiet.
She has the floor, please.
What, that's what we need to be doing, because every community, Wayne is, 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 is about like us. But the city of Dearborn and Dearborn Heights, they're thriving. That's what we need to be doing. What, how can you get somebody to take a leaf of faith to come in this city and build something? A Chick-fil-A, something that all of our residents can enjoy. But that's all I have to say. Yeah, and I'm done.
Okay, and Mayor Pro Tim Howard, as it relates to, you asked me to, last meeting to, to talk with some of our neighbors and look at, you know, just different leases and that. And I ran across an agreement that the city of Inkster had with the developer back in two thousand sixteen seventeen. And for whatever reason, it didn't happen in the city of Inkster. But it ended up happening in the city of Dearborn Heights. And what they did was they actually leased. Um, their land, one of their parks, for twenty-five years. And um, you know, that's how they collect their taxes through that. So I do have that information. I'll be sending that information. I didn't wanna send it tonight at the council, but I just received it. But I will be sending it so you can see the development and the purchase agreement that was with the city of Inkster for the property, the old Civic Arena. Um, up on Michigan Avenue to be redeveloped, and the developer took the two million dollars and put it over into. The city of Dearborn Heights. And I don't know what happened, um, but per the emails, it just looked like. You know, nobody was getting back with them at the time. And you, I have that documentation. I will be forwarding that to you. So we did what you asked, as it relates to this other municipalities, uh, city of Wayne. Of Ford Motor, I actually is leasing some land from them. Had a hundred-year lease. It was up like ten years ago. Um, so it was just different ones. So I'll just make sure that I send that to you. Um, and let me just say this to, to the council. I would not assume to bring something back that died, no matter what it is. So we, we brought it to the council. It was on the agenda. You voted it down. I wouldn't assume to just bring it back because of what we're saying. If you guys want me to bring it back, and that's the consensus of this body. You know, I heard her say, you know, at that first meeting, we asked for you to table it. You know, I heard her say, you know, at that first meeting, we asked for you to table it and for us to have a community discussion about it. And we didn't get one supporter from Councilman Shaw's motion. So the next motion and action was to vote, you voted it down. So if you want me to bring it back. You know, bringing it back is the same thing that I'm talking about, a letter of intent. To go into a relationship with the Rhythm and Blues Hall of Fame as a development, start working on the development agreement. Within that time, year number one, they have to do a feasibility study, which is not gonna cost the city any money. Currently, right now, the city's liability with the land itself, the grass cutting alone, is costing us over twelve thousand dollars a year. Along with insurance on top of that. The liability would in turn go over to the Rhythm and Blues Hall of Fame and the developers on that. So that's in year, year one. In year number two, along with that feasibility study, you have to bring up your financials and show us how you can build a project and get the project done. And then in year number three, shovels in the ground. If that's not, that doesn't happen, then it reverse back to the city. Now, as it relates to ninety-nine years versus twenty-five years, or thirty years, or ten years, or whatever it is. We can work that out. As it relates to the land itself, the land itself is assessed. At with the state equalized value, and then we tripled that amount. It's four thousand and eight, basically. So we tripled that amount up to seventeen thousand five hundred or something, a little bit over tripled that amount. And then we came up with like four hundred thousand to be able to, you know, say that's what the land is worth. As we looked at the agreement with Rumless, with the attorneys, with uh Harry, um, as it relates to land being back, given back to Ingle. We couldn't put another financial, I mean, not financial institution, uh, educational institution on the land. As it relates to the monies, if we sell the property, then that monies will go to the state of Michigan. In an effort to, for our school debt, in an effort to try to at least. You know, get some money, some revenue coming in for the city on an annual basis. We were looking at a lease agreement to be able to say, okay, this is the lease, this is how much you're gonna actually pay for the property itself, that it would include. The tax, the taxes, along with some monies that we were talking about in the agreement to send towards our school debt. Now, we know that it's a couple of different entities that's working on our school debt right now. Our school debt will not be paid off until twenty thirty-five. As it stands today, until twenty thirty-five. So, um, with that being said, you know, of course, I get it. You know, let's take every dollar we can and put it towards the school debt. But it's gonna be an uphill battle with that. So we're looking to get the school debt dissolved completely. So we're working to do that. Some announcements will be coming forward. So at any rate, just wanted to put that out there. So what I will do is, I mean, I think I heard the general consensus of this body, if somebody has. Um, you know, don't want it, you know, we can put together with the proposed developers. An actual community forum at the recreation complex, have Mister Lamont Robinson come out with his group. Do an actual presentation for us with the memorabilia and all of that good stuff, and let the community chime in before the next council meeting. So if it's a week from now, uh, we'll look at that date, we'll put it out there, we'll get with Mister Robinson and see if that works for him. And then the general public can come in and talk to him, ask him any questions. We'll also try to stream it live onto our social media platforms. Um, you know, to be able to, you know, get other comments in and questions in. If that's something that this body wants to do, then. I'm gonna move forward with that.
Mister Mayor, can I ask you something before that?
Please.
Okay, now, you did say if we sell the land, that uh. The money will go to the state. So if we lease the land, that money should go to the state, so we shouldn't get anything, right?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So is that what you're saying? So people saying bringing money to Ingle, it's not going to Ingle, it's gonna go to pay off that debt. Am I correct on saying it?
Right, so the first part of it, you're right. So the four hundred thousand, if we sold it outright, will go towards the debt. It doesn't speak in the contract as it relates to us being able to lease the land or do other things of, you know, with the property to raise money.
Right, but if I, right, but if I'm understanding this, how can we profit off a dollar or whatever? And the school debt is owed. That's what I'm saying, so.
Other part of it that we would have to work, we would have to work out. It doesn't say anything in the contract as it relates to now, and I understand with the school debt as it relates to now. That if we, you know, if we lease the land, then we couldn't keep a certain amount of that money, and then a certain amount of that money go to the school debt.
Right, but I would, I would rather prefer that if that's something that that body, the body wants to do. That all of the money should go to the school debt, because you still have. Commu- uh, residents that's in that district paying taxes on that. So that will help alleviate, help relieve some of the taxes that they do have to pay. So I need to see the contract, or I need to see the contract. When they gave us that land, what's in it? I've never signed, seen it. When they gave us back that land.
Mister Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Let me, let me say this little part for Kim and understand this. Okay, the people, the people of the city of Ingle with the Ingle Public School debt. Could have chose, could have chose to wipe that, you know, to wipe that debt out, okay? But if they would have, if they would have decided, okay? Okay, to wipe that debt out, then the money that the, 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 the. The military, they'll be paying to Rumless and Taylor and other school districts would be a lot more than what they paying now. And go look it up. That's the reason why they stopped, that's the reason why they, they, they stopped the state rep from trying, trying to say, wa- wipe this part out. Okay?
We definitely will look into that and and get you all that information. But, you know, again, I'm hearing the consensus of the body, um, outside of Mayor Pro Tim Howard, and what. You know, we need to send her, we'll make sure that we send you that information. We'll talk to the developers, set and set that up, you know, for a public informational. To the community to be able to chime in as it relates to the Rhythm and Blues Hall of Fame making its home here in the great city of Ingle. On that note, I'll call for, oh, last thing, three one three, five six three, nine seven seven four. That's the number to DPW, three one three, five six three, nine seven seven four. If you're still needing to upload your information, we're still able to do that. Um, as it relates to flood damage, if you have anything that you set out on the curve, we need to know where that stuff is at. As we're going through the trash routes and working with GFL to catch up on the trash routes, we wanna be able to make sure that we're picking everything up off the curve. So if you could, please just call into that number, give us that location. That way we can make sure that we get those things that you set out, out of your basements. Um, that we can, that we can help you in that regard. Also, too, if you're a senior or you're disabled and you need help. With getting your basement cleaned, please call that same number, three one three, five six three, nine seven seven four. They'll take your information, and we'll do our best to gather a crew to be able to come out and help you, myself included. All right, call for a German?
Mr. Chair, just, just one quick, quick uh note. Now, that's gonna be contracted out with DPS. Is that correct, that you're gonna have extra people to, to be able to help and pick up that trash and what have you?
Well, the contract, we have a contract with GFL, our contract, our trash contractor. Is that what you're talking about from the curb?
No, addition, addition to that, is, is there gonna be any more support to uh DPS to, you know, help pick up some of that trash? As they ride through the trash route? I know, I know GP, uh.
Doing it all over the weekend. They've been, they've been out working, doing it over the weekend and the holiday. So we would be in addition to GFL picking it up at the curb. Um, Mister Bivin has, has been working with them to distinguish what's been on the curb, because we had. No folks in the community, and I truly apologize as it relates to the trash sitting on the curb upwards to two to three weeks. Because of GFL and the shortage with, shortage with manpower, and we know that's happening all over the place. However, that's no excuse. To not have trash picked up. Trash, we picking up compost, we picking up bulk, but we never got to it all. So we formulated a plan with DPW. Um, uh, to go out and actually pick up as much of the trash and bulk that they could. GFL is the sole provider, if you will, of the actual, um, you know, to pick up the trash. So they, we have a contract with them to do that.
And, and I understand, I understand what you're saying. Now, did that meeting take place yet with GFL concerning the. Previous time when they had, you know, the shortage of manpower, uh, due to us having a contract with them?
That's coming up, that's coming up soon. That, that's coming up soon. Mister Bivin is actually on vacation tomorrow. And I wanted to make sure that Mister Bivin was at the table, so next week we'll be having it when they come, when he comes back. Meeting, uh, with our attorneys as well, understand that.
Okay, very good. All right, mo- motion to adjourn?
Your support?
Support.
All the favors say aye?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned. Have a good week, everybody. Thank you.